What about you?
I got a little wonder.
We'd like to welcome everyone to the March 22nd meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we do the business of the city. We ask that you give us the leadership opportunities to do those things that will be pleasing and in the best interest of our citizens. In your name we pray, amen. Would you join me in pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, you called a roll.
Alderman Beagle here. Alderman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best. Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Hughes, was there an item change on form?
Yes, yes, sir. On consent agenda, item number four, to consider adopting a resolution to closing specific streets for operation of downtown street cafes. The event organizer reached out today and they inadvertently left out one street closure, and that was the 400 block of Pollock Street.
So...
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion we adopt the consent agenda with the addition of the 400 block of Pollock Street added to item number four.
Second. Motion, and second is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same motion carries. Number seven.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to ask Tom Forthers, he is the Senior Assistant General Counsel in North Carolina League of Municipalities, to come up and make a presentation.
Mayor, members of board, thank you for allowing me to come in here today and speak briefly regarding the legal requirements for the duty to vote and the conflicts of interest that may apply. Thank you, Colleen, and with luck this will work. The, before we begin, I have been introduced. My name is Tom Forthers, and I am with the League. Unlike your historic town, here, the League has only been in existence for 108 years. But we do work with 551 cities, towns, and villages of North Carolina. We provide, in addition to our insurance services, we provide legal counseling, we provide educational benefits, and we look forward to reaching out to our community and helping our local governments in any way we can. Now, today, I'm going to speak about two general statutes and the conflicts of interest that are contained in two of them. All attorneys know 168. Chapter 168, since 1971, has been the law of the cities of North Carolina. But recently, in 2019 and 2020, an additional chapter was adopted by the legislature and by your town as well, I'm sure, and that was Chapter 160D. And they both have some similar but slightly different conflict of interests that are worth mentioning, and I hope that what I have to say tonight has some meaning, and if not, just let me know, and we'll continue with other questions. Now, there we go. Let's start with an easy question. Why do we vote? Well, the General Assembly has established that this board and all boards throughout the state are deliberative bodies. This means that no single member has authority to direct the affairs of the town. And authority of the town is created when there is a majority of the elected board, either by vote or sometimes by consensus. And the way that you determine your majority, of course, is through the parliamentary procedures adopted by your board. Now, we know that the purpose of the parliamentary procedures are to provide each elected official the right to participate in debate if it occurs and to participate in the vote. And once the vote is tallied and recorded in the minutes as required by the law of the court, it becomes the official action of the town. Now, what the law also requires is that each member who has taken the oath of office after being elected shall have a duty to vote. And what the law says, and this is 168.75, and I know the board is familiar with this, that no member shall be excused from voting except upon matters involving consideration of their financial interest or official conduct. And it says at its core that a failure to vote shall be recorded as an affirmative vote. And that is because the law is serious that you are elected to make the hard decisions. And when in doubt, you should accept the general rule, which is you will be required to vote, and so will your colleagues. And, you know, one of the unfortunate situations I've seen, I was City Attorney at Greensboro previously, and also served on staff there for years. You know, if the meeting's going late, and someone has to go home and take care of a family member, and they get up and they leave the dais, you know, if they do not ask to be excused by the board pursuant to a vote, and they walk out of the room, then the clerk would have a duty, and this clerk knows this, we know each other from the Clerk's Association, but the clerk would have a duty to record your vote in the affirmative for every single vote taken in your absence, whether or not you are in favor of it, or whether or not you were aware the vote was going to be taken. And that's how serious the duty to vote is in this state, and so I'm sure each of you, if you had to leave, would always ask to be excused. Now, there are exceptions to every law, and the exceptions to the duty to vote are called conflicts of interest. And the way, the best definition of them is that in certain instances, the law has decided that the personal interest of the individual elected official is too great to permit that elected official to vote in the public's interest. And in those circumstances, when it is established, then it is appropriate to recognize your conflict of interest and ask to be recused from voting. Now, you're always going to be confronted with situations, and how you handle these things determines, you know, how you succeed as an elected official. And the real question, and what I'm going to talk about a little bit more today, is when does this conflict rise to the level of a legal conflict of interest that would prevent you from fulfilling your elected duty to vote? Now, I'm going to talk about five different conflicts of interest, okay? The first one is detailed in Chapter 168, that has been around since 1971. Two are actually in the criminal statutes. Anytime a lawyer sees Chapter 14 open up, you're like, oh, we're talking crimes now. And then the next two are in the Chapter 160A, 160D, that was just an act. Now, the first one is called a personal financial interest or official conduct conflict. The second is only having to do specifically with the adoption of contracts, and whether the elected or their spouse has a direct benefit. The third is whether the elected official is a member of a board of a nonprofit that is funded by the city and the city's considering additional funding. That became a conflict in January 1 of this year. And then we're going to pivot over briefly to Chapter 160D, and that's the developmental regulations, the land use regulations. Scott, your attorney, has said that, you know, this board hears zoning matters and rezoning matters. That would be under Chapter 160D. And one is if you have a direct substantial financial impact, which is much more identifiable than the personal financial interest. And the other is whether you have a relationship with the person seeking the rezoning, that is two cliques, whether it's personal, business, or association. And we're going to talk about all those a little bit. Now, you really have three types of votes as an elected official, and 98% of them are, or 95% of them are legislative. But it is possible that you would sit in a quasi-judicial capacity, and if you did, then you would have to follow the constitutional due process requirements and be the impartial fact-finder making decisions based on what is presented at the hearing. Now, I don't believe this board sits for the Historic Commission, maybe not for variances, and maybe not, but maybe for appeals from a zoning official citation. But in those circumstances, due process rights occur, and you are required to be the impartial decision maker. Now, we're not even going to go into that, because I know you are the impartial decision maker, but the conflicts I'm going to be talking about have to do with legislative votes. And here's the difference. When you sit as a legislative body, you are allowed to keep the promises you made to your constituency when you were elected. Let's say you're running your campaign, and one of the tenants of your campaign is, "I'm not voting for the rock quarry inside the town limits." And you promise your constituents you will oppose them, and you're elected, and the rezoning comes before this board, right here. Can you still participate? Yes, because legislators are allowed to have their own opinions outside of what the hearing provides. And that's what allows you to live up to your promises, to your constituency and to your town. And then finally, you have procedural votes, and these are the small votes. You know, it's when something is going to occur, not how, what is occurring. That would typically be a vote to continue or a vote to postpone. Typically, those would not have conflicts of interest. Now, let's talk about personal financial interest. This is one of the oldest exceptions to the duty to vote. Now, we all have financial interests, large and small, specific and general. So when does the financial interest that you hold regarding a matter before this board create a conflict of interest on a proposed vote? It clearly is not all the time. That is not what the law intends. All right. And here's the thing, there's no one definition. The law says it is a case-by-case decision. And the central question is when does the personal interest outweigh the public interest? It's a balancing test. Now, if the vote reflects interest of all citizens, including the elected official, or a large group of citizens, including the elected official, it's generally not a conflict. For example, the best example, you can always vote on the tax rate. Now, that does affect your personal financial interest, but it affects it in the same way as every other member of this community. So the law does not deem it a personal financial interest that rises to the level of a conflict. You can vote on the Transportation Department's paving budget, even if the street in front of your home is going to be repaved, because your interest is the same as everybody else's interest that is going to benefit from that repaving. Typically, rezoning in your neighborhood that is not your house would not be a sufficient personal interest, because it is the same as everybody in that neighborhood. Now, but however, if the matter is to build a road to an undeveloped lot of land owned by a member, that would be a personal financial interest that raises to the level of a conflict. So, and this is obvious, but you need to look at the totality, the whole circumstance. And then, and this is, you're going to hear me say this several times, talk with your Have, give him the opportunity to render a decision on reflection. You know, it's kind of unfair when the meeting's in, you know, the heated moment, and you turn and say, "I need a legal opinion on you in the next 30 seconds." I know this board would never do that, but give your attorney some chance to think about it, one side or the other, and then render that opinion. Now, here's a misconception with the general public sometimes, but you can vote on your own salary and your expense. Now, I know all of y'all are here making at least 50 cents an hour on this job, but, you know, you can vote on that if you want to and not have a conflict of interest. Now, in addition, that same statute talks about personal conduct. And really, what this plays out, and it is a conflict of interest, is when you announce that you have a conflict and ask the board to vote to excuse you, you really should not then vote to excuse yourself. That would be voting on your personal conduct. Now, if the board, and this is rare, would either vote to censor or criticize you, or praise you, or adopt a resolution in your honor for your wonderful actions on behalf of the town, again, you really should not vote. Those are the times when it's appropriate to step aside, because it is your personal conduct that is at the issue. Now, let's talk about the second exception. This is from the criminal statute. If the board is considering a contract where either the elected member or their spouse receives a direct benefit, then this statute applies. And the statute is clear, it applies to anyone who makes or administers contracts. And every board in every city and town in North Carolina has the legal duty to make and administer the contracts, because the buck stops with the elected officials. So this statute applies. Now, some people sometimes get confused with personal financial interest, what we just talked about, but this is entirely different, and the law is absolutely clear. It only applies to votes on contracts, and only when there's a direct benefit to the elected member or their spouse. So what is a direct benefit? If you own 10% or more of the entity that is receiving the contract, you have a direct benefit. If you're receiving income or commission from the contract, it's a direct benefit. If you're acquiring property under the contract, it's a direct benefit. For example, the town can't vote to award your construction company the repaving contract. But what about if it's your brother's construction paving company? Well, you're not, it's not your spouse, so this law would not apply. There is not a direct benefit to just brothers. It is only spouses. Now, you may want to speak to your attorney, and depending on whether you're close to your brother or not, and if you haven't seen him for 30 years, you know, maybe you don't have a problem, but you're attorney, and you may consider whether or not you have a personal financial interest in the ties between yourself and your brother, and you could ask to vote to recuse, but not, not adopt the contract. If you're a real estate broker and the town is looking to buy land, they cannot buy it while you're getting a real estate commission as the broker, if you're an elected official. If you're an attorney, a partner in a law firm, which means you're an equity owner, and the town is considering whether to retain your law firm, cannot be done, because you're receiving income from that contract as an equity member. However, if you're an associate of a law firm, an employee, there is no conflict here, because the contract runs to the firm and the employee is not the same as the firm. The employee is not the same as an equity partner. And what's to remember is first, not only can members with direct benefits and members with spouses with a direct benefit not vote, you also cannot seek to influence others on your board about this vote. You're not allowed to participate. And this is why it's important. It's a crime. If you vote, it's a crime with a direct benefit. If you do not vote, and the board still votes, it's a crime, and the contract is void. Now, there's some exceptions to this criminal direct benefit. Let's go down the road here. Your spouse is allowed to work for the city. That makes sense, because some towns are so small, you know, they need to have that ability. It is not considered a conflict, even if the board were to vote to hire the spouse. Now, I know this town has manager Hughes, and it would be his directive, but still, that's how the law shakes that out. If you have a contract with a bank that may be owned by a member of the board or part of the board, you know, again, that would not be a conflict. And if you had to condemn property, it's not a conflict. And, you know, think about that. If the town had to run a new sewer line, and they couldn't reach price terms with the property owner who happened to be an elected official, the town's going to need to go on and condemn the property, and that is not considered a conflict under the law. And the last is public assistance, but that's really a county function, so I don't think I really need to talk about that. There's also the small-town exception, which allows direct benefits, but the town has to have a population of 20,000 or less, and I understand that this town is at 30,000 roughly, so we don't have to discuss the small-town exception. Now, as of January 1, a new law came into effect, and this is really, towns have struggled with this. It is very common in North Carolina for elected officials to serve on boards of directors of nonprofit corporations that work to benefit the good of the people of the town. It has never been a problem in conflict of interest analysis before January 1. And the reason is, and y'all know this, that when you serve on a board of directors of a nonprofit, you are not paid. But because of some unfortunate situations in towns that are not this way, the law now says that that is a conflict of interest. And so this applies whenever the elected is a director of the nonprofit, an officer of the nonprofit, or a governing board member of the nonprofit. The elected cannot deliberate, or vote, or seek to influence anyone else, and to do so is a crime. However, if the elected refuses, then the board can continue with the contract, and the vote to adopt, unlike the previous direct benefit we just discussed, the vote is, may proceed, and there is no issue. All right. Now, let's talk about the two conflicts of interest under Chapter 160D, the land development Now, if any vote under 160D has a direct substantial financial impact on the member, which I think in this, your instance, would be on rezoning, and that's a much higher standard than the personal financial interest by the law, then you would not be able to vote. Now, here's, here's the best example. If you need to have your land rezoned, and you're an elected official, you can't vote on it. Okay? That's, I mean, but this is something I know that you already know, and you would never think that you would want to do, because it's not in the public interest. You can always vote on the comprehensive land use or the citywide land use plan, because again, your interest is the same as anybody else who owns property in the town. If you were to vote on a historic preservation matter and it only benefited your property, that would be a substantial direct financial impact. But if you're making a vote on the downtown business district, and you happen to own a building in the district, again, your interest is the same as everybody else who owns property in the district, and it would not trigger the analysis. Now, here's the next one. Well, I'll just discuss what that means, so let's keep going here. And this only applies to rezonies or original zonings. And the law focuses on when is the relationship with the person seeking the rezoning too close. And it can either be close familial relationships, close business relationships, or close associational relationships. And that's the wording of the statute. And the statute defines what familial relationships are, and they're, I think they're everything, even for southerners. They're spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, grandchild, half-relations, step-relations, and in-law relations. You can't vote on your mother-in-law's rezoning. Now, the law does not define what a close business relationship is, or a close associational relationship. And again, that's when you need to pick up the phone and talk to your attorney. But if it's your business partner, I would argue that that is a close business relationship. Now, what if it's your ministry? This is not defined in law. What is a close associational relationship? Maybe, maybe not. But these are things that need to be discussed with your attorney, and then if necessary, discussed in public before votes. And I'm going to get more to that in a second. And we've talked about that. So how are you excused from voting? The method you use is exactly the method that is used throughout North Carolina, and it is not ever specified in the statute. It's the common law. You speak, you may or may not talk to your lawyer. You tell your board you have a conflict, and out of respect, the board goes to recuse you from the matter. Now, in 160D, the state has finally gotten specific enough to give us some direction. And under 160D, which is rezoning, if the elected believes they have a conflict, or if the elected is alleged to have a conflict, then the elected declares whether or not the conflict exists, and then if the board disagrees, they can vote overturn it. Again, that's not just specified in 160D, has nothing to do with all the other body of the law in North Carolina, 168. Now, here's really, really the best advice. Rely on your attorney and talk with him. I've had important discussions with electors at the time I represented them, before the meeting, where they have come to my office and we have talked, and it has given me time to reflect on their unique situation, and then finally make a decision. And what I've realized now is it's always better even to disclose a potential conflict, even if you don't think it prevents you from voting. Now, not every run-of-the-mill, small thing, but if you've thought about it, someone else is thinking about it. Why take the risk that a community member or colleague will accuse you of violating your ethical duties? What you should do is address it publicly, if it's a close call, because the courts will, are willing to give elected officials the benefit of the doubt. So if you have a close call, and you discuss it on the record as reflected by the minutes, and you make your decision with advice of your attorney, and your board supports, then the courts are going to typically give that great weight. And also, in this time of heightened tensions, it shows the public that you believe in transparency, and you're willing to have the tough discussions publicly. And I'm sure this board would do it similarly. Now, I think that's a good point for me to stop this, but I appreciate you inviting me to your chamber, and I appreciate your service. It is a long job, and I meant to mention this on the front end, but I'm also presenting with the School of Government at the newly-elected officials and newly-re-elected officials' conferences that are going around the state, and we are scheduled to be in New Bern, I think, in mid-June or early June, but that may be pushed back now through the latest decisions of the legislature.
Board, have questions?
I do. In regards to the new statute that passed...
In regards to the new statute that passed for nonprofits, last year, the board decided to work with a nonprofit that I co-founded. I asked to recuse myself. I didn't have to because of that statute. This year, they decide to work with us again in regards to, you know, utilizing the fireman and things of that nature. I would need to recuse myself, correct?
Yes. The law would...if you're a member of the board of directors-
I am.
...or an officer of the corporation-
Yes.
...then you fall within that definition, and the law requires you to recuse yourself.
Thank you.
But the board can still move forward.
Sir, would you please go a little bit into the board's responsibilities during a closed session?
Absolutely, because closed sessions are vital to the proper functioning of a city, because you can't...some things are confidential, like personnel. We are not a sunshine state in North Carolina, and personnel laws are protected, except for very limited, like the date of hire, the date of fire, and the promotions and the salaries. But if the board is reviewing performance of a person it has appointed, or discussing the employee performance of someone that the town has hired, those are classic examples of what needs to go into closed session. Now, economic development is an absolutely appropriate reason to go into closed session, because by the nature of business, businesses like to protect their information because of the competitive nature, and they need to have the ability to speak frankly with the board, and understand whether or not there is a consensus to move forward. Now, any economic incentive that the board may award would be a public vote, but the discussions do not have to be...occur in open session, and what you're gonna find is, most businesses want it in closed session to protect their business interests while they're still making their decision. To receive legal advice from your attorney, another classic reason why you need to go into closed session. Cases are competitive. That's the American judicial system. And if you were to discuss all of your thoughts, and all of your worries, and all of your pros, and all of your cons about independent litigation, you would be handing victory to the person suing the town, or who this town is suing. And that's frankly not a responsible way to run a litigation. Another perfect reason why it needs to go into closed session. Now, there's only five more, but I'd probably need to look up the rest of them to continue talking.
What about the board members are the elected officials' responsibility to keep what happens in closed session in closed session? I mean, I...we've been told that it's not illegal for you to come out and discuss with the press what's in closed session, or, you know, what is the board, the elected officials' responsibility?
For economic incentive or for litigation, there is no mandated confidentiality of what occurs in closed session. And if a board member wants to discuss it, that board member does not violate the law in doing so. A question that must be asked is, what is the purpose of going into closed session, even when it's necessary and in the town's interest, if it cannot be maintained confidential until the right time? It's a matter of trust. All business has to be conducted with trust. Politics should be conducted with trust, and operates much better.
So to clarify, you're not breaking the law of things in closed sessions outside of personnel are discussed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, it's kinda senseless to go into a closed session when you walk out of the closed session. Other than personnel, when you walk out of the closed session, and things are starting to be discussed by some of the elected officials, or an elected official, you know, what took place during a closed session? Hell, why go in closed sessions?
Those are decisions for the board to make, and both of you are expressing opinions that are relevant to this discussion, and I would encourage this board to continue that discussion.
Thank you very much. Question back to the nonprofit. So, we as elected officials oftentimes get appointed to various boards, like an economic development board, for example. I'm the city's representative. I have a voting right on that board of directors. Can you clarify, because there's a lot of question throughout the community about what this new general statute covers?
It's not entirely all settled yet, but unless the nonprofit is formed by the state, it is going to fall within these definitions. Now, I am aware of one legal opinion that says it has to really be a 501(c)(3), which is, you know, a subtype of all closed sessions, because when you look at the statute, the wording is exactly the same as the IRS definitions of a 501(c)(3), but the law does not specifically address that. So that is exactly the type of opinion that your city attorney would need to render, because he has the statutory duty to provide the legal advice for the town.
And just to clarify, what you're not supposed to vote on, is it for the...this governing body that funds that nonprofit, or is it any vote for the nonprofit because they've received funds from the governing board?
It affects the elected's ability to vote. Once the elected has moved to the nonprofit role, he's no longer sitting as an elected, and in my little opinion, that law does not apply.
Okay. So technically, I probably should not vote on our budget, because our budget includes funding for C-1A, but I'm okay to vote with the C-1A board, because they've received the funds from the city.
That is correct, and your manager and your attorney can come up with very innovative ways to address the budget issue.
Thank you.
I know one thing some towns now are talking about on the listservs, which is, you know, the chat rooms for the School of Government maintains, is for there to be a set budget for nonprofit funding, period, on the...in the budget. But then, after that, the board votes individually on what nonprofits receive what, and then you would recuse from the board.
Okay. Thank you.
In your expert opinion, do you think it would be appropriate, because of this new statute, for all elected officials to disclose what boards that they sit on, just so it's public record, and it's record on file for their constituents to know?
The law requires each town or city to adopt a code of ethics, and I have not reviewed your code of ethics.
Taking that one step further, sir. So in many cases, we are ex officios on boards, and don't necessarily have a voting status on a board, but we serve as ex officios because of our roles as elected officials. In that case, is that the same?
Well, again, this is gonna be where your attorney comes into play, because the wording of the statute says member of the board, or official, or manager, I believe. I'd have to look at the exact statute. It does not say ex officio, but query is ex officio, member of the board, and has, you know, a non-voting member. It's a classic gray area that has not been fully resolved yet.
I haven't figured it all out yet. Thank you.
So if that's the case, we probably wanna be able to vote on it in the redevelopment, as long as we sit...
No, because redevelopment, I think it's...
I'm saying when it comes to us, when they bring any plan or anything back to the board, we don't vote in the session.
Yeah, we don't have a vote...so we are ex officios on our redevelopment commission. Redevelopment commission...
They're not a 501(c)(3), so it doesn't matter.
They're funded by the city. It's...it wouldn't pertain to this. It only pertains to 501(c)(3)'s, correct?
Yeah. Well, it definitely only applies to independent nonprofits, and if it's just a rezoning commission, which is a satellite board of this town, it is not...doesn't have its own tax ID number-
Correct.
-you know, it's not an independent entity.
Well, I'm a little puzzled. Maybe you can help me out. It almost looks to me like if you were in the spirit of what you're saying, I don't know, we could get a form together to pass a budget.
Well, that's the way I'm commending you, to your good work of your manager and your attorney. The local governments are all talking about this, because the budget is a complex problem. And so, I think the recommended practice, though, is to create, set asides in the budget that would go to nonprofits, and then have the specific vote on awarding to the nonprofits done after the adoption of the budget, because everybody needs to participate on the adoption of the budget if possible.
Sir, are you seeing that, or the way we do budgets in the future, we would amend this? Could you elaborate on what you're seeing and thinking?
Two separate votes. I would see this two separate votes, a vote in the budget, and a vote for the nonprofit budget.
Yes, ma'am. Well, you adopt your budget with a pool of nonprofit funds, and then, subsequent to that, you would vote to take that pot of money and fund specific nonprofits, with each of you recusing yourselves, depending on the nonprofit.
Yeah.
So that's something that we have to handle this budget since then?
That's in the works.
Gotcha.
And that bill got read in Raleigh how many times before it became law? I'm just asking. Several times, correct? It's not like somebody just introduced this, and all of a sudden, the General Assembly passed it, so...
I don't remember the specifics, but there was one town that there was an abusive situation, and the state reacted to that need, and used a broad net, in my opinion.
So one apple doesn't spoil the whole bunch.
So do in-kind services come into play that they probably don't...
Yes.
Let's talk about in-kind services.
Well, if it's a vote to provide in-kind services, I would be wary. If it is just the day-to-day transactions that aren't voted on by the board, I don't think there's an issue there.
So if it's an in-kind, you know, we're speaking specific, it wouldn't have mattered before, because it wasn't law till now, but...so, you know, our annual Swiss fair mumfest, the city provides in-kind services, such as our public works, our police, whatever, and it's not a monetary figure. It's that...I don't know if you would consider that part of our budget, I assume, because the salaries and the overtimes are all considered in the budget, and there's that instance, again, where we vote on the whole budget. So that will make it interesting this year, if you're saying that in-kind would be treated as the same.
Well, I'm just gonna say it's an interesting question that hasn't been fully thought out, and I am always reticent, when I was city attorney, to give an off-the-cuff opinion, and I'm even more reticent when I can't even legally give a legal opinion, so...
Go to work, Scott, is what he's saying.
Well, I don't have...have you guys been figuring out how many of these individual ones we're gonna be doing? How many are we gonna be doing? About 20 of them, or...
Well, it's only three people that I think sit on a board that may be affected by the budget, so we still have a forum to vote.
On this museum.
But, okay, that's interesting. But you can still get a forum?
No, we only have, because Jeff sits on C-1A, we only have three, three of the seven.
Also, he was saying you do it individually.
Just on that particular budget?
Yeah, budget, okay.
So, okay, so each one, we would have to vote one separately.
Yes, ma'am.
We're just depending on Scott.
That's gonna be a long meeting, because you have to officially ask the board to recuse you, the board has to vote to recuse you, and then they vote, and then you have to ask to come back.
I don't wanna make sure I understood you to say that you can't participate in the discussion either. Is that correct?
It says that you should not participate in deliberation, or seek to influence.
So no comments can be made for or against?
Correct.
Got it.
Is it a good idea that, from what you're seeing from this, and where we're going in the future, with transparency and all of that, a board member sitting on a board or something, that they in writing, write out their position on a particular board, and hand it to the clerk or something, or just...is all this verbal, or should it be in writing on the part? Let's say that I'm on a board, and it gets $10,000. You should I, myself, write out that I'm doing this, and then ask to be recused, or...
It can be done either way. I just advise it be done to give heads up to your attorney before the meeting, because, you know, because, you know, when you're two hours into the meeting, it's easy to make the mistake.
While we're getting here, you are the counsel. Sometimes, I can tell you, I've been given a jersey, a portrait, I mean, I've been, you know, given...
A clue.
Well, I'm not giving that one, but it's been quite a few things. First thing I do is, I give it to the clerk, and then she documents and archives it. I don't mind it being displayed in the mayor's office, but it's not mine. Would you comment a little bit about, I mean, and how, you know, sends a cent a cent is a $5 magnet, or a $500 any item? Where's the dividing line?
Well, I'll speak from memory here, but there are specific state statutes regarding receiving gifts, and one, we know that we're never going to accept anything of monetary value in exchange for a position or a vote, because that's fraud, and it's a felony. Now, items of nominal value can be accepted. When you go as a speaker, and you receive your little bag of goodies, you know, that's considered acceptable. The law even says...
You better go ahead and explain that bag of goodies. Now, there'd be some goodies in that bag.
Well, I mean, like, you know, whether it's a, like, I've got a USB drive on me somewhere, you know, that was really hot to give to people a couple of years ago when those were novel. If it's a car, it doesn't, you know, that's illegal. But interestingly enough, you know, the law says you can accept an honorarium. In many communities, an honorarium for speaking is money.
Right.
And so, the law has been flexible enough to allow that. You know, so, but the statute itself needs to be gone over. I would have happily talked about that, too, but I left that part of my presentation a bit confused.
Well, okay. Sorry, I put you on the spot there.
But, I mean, you know, it's...and here's a classic example, the Christmas basket. You know, the...someone drops by the huge meat and cheese thing, and it's Christmas time, and they really appreciate your service as an elected official, and it's sitting there, right, you know, they put it into your hands. You know, what are you supposed to do? It's not of nominal value, and what is the recommended response is to take that to the clerk, or take it to the employee break room, and put a little note on it, and say, enjoy it, because cities and towns can accept gifts. Individual elected officials may be restricted.
But don't put a tag on it that says compliments of Mayor Outlaw.
Correct. It's not from the mayor, it's from the donor, and the mayor is accepting it on behalf of the town.
Any other questions, just forwardhand?
Thank you for coming to New Bern, we appreciate it.
Oh, what a great opportunity to get out of the office. And I'll be heading down to Wilmington tomorrow to continue the newly-re-elected conference. And, but with your permission, I'm going to excuse myself and hand the remote back to Columbia.
Tell our friends in Wilmington to ask about them.
Thanks, board. So, Scott Foster.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Let's go to our number eight.
Mayor, next item is a presentation on affirmative action plan by the New Bern Peoples' Assembly. At this time, I'd like to ask Curtis Stewart and Bailey Evans to come up and make their presentation.
Thank you for having us. This is Curtis Stewart, and I'm Bailey Evans. We're here on behalf of the New Bern Peoples' Assembly to present an affirmative action plan for the city government's workforce. The plan was drafted by our Employment Committee with the counsel of the North Carolina chapter of the National Conference of Black Employers, and is supported by many members of our community. Before we discuss the actual plan, we'd like to briefly explain why we and other members of the community believe it necessary to adopt this plan without delay. So first, let's take a look at the current demographics of the city government workforce. This info was provided... This info was provided to us by the city's HR department. And it shows us that of the four hundred and fifty-six people employed by the city of New Bern, seventy-seven percent are white and eighteen point six percent are black. And other minority groups are also only marginally represented. Nearly seventy-five percent of the employees identified as male. When we look at these numbers by department, it's a little bit small. We see that minority groups are underrepresented in nearly every area except for in Parks and Rec. And in general, most of these departments are disproportionately white and male. So, it's important to look at these numbers because local government better serves its people when the workforce accurately reflects the community. It's been objectively proven that diversity in the workplace has the potential to increase productivity, creativity, and cultural understanding. So, let's compare those workforce demographics to those of our city at large. So, what we see is that the population of slightly over thirty-one thousand is fifty-eight point nine percent white and thirty point four percent black, and the women marginally outnumber the men. So, this is quite a contrast to our overwhelmingly white male majority among the city personnel. And it's easy to see that nearly all historically marginalized groups are seriously underrepresented in our local government workforce. Black citizens and women in particular are hugely lacking in representation here, and we think this is a serious problem for the city. New Bern can only benefit from joining the hundreds of other cities that are taking a proactive approach to solving this. I'm gonna turn it over to the chair of our Employment Committee, Curtis Stewart, so that he can get into a little more detail about what exactly an affirmative action plan is and is not.
Thank you. First and foremost, I just want to say we appreciate you guys allowing us to go on this agenda. I think there's been some back and forth in regards to this. I think there's been some conversation with Alderman in regards to this. And the fact that a couple of you guys took the time to sit down with us and have some conversation, I think is at least appreciated and understood that there is some things that need to kind of change. We sat down with the city attorney, we've sat down with the mayor, we've sat down with Sabrina, we've sat down with Bullock, and we appreciate that. I think the information may have been brought up by another of us some years ago. And I think our people kind of took, the People's Assembly took this kind of topic and ran with it. And we, again, just appreciate you guys listening to us and letting us bring this to the table. In a nutshell, you know, I'm not gonna go through each slide, slide by slide. I think in conversation, we recognize that minorities are not represented well in our city. That can be from a couple of different things. That can be from recruitment, that can be from advertising, that can be just from lack of resumes coming in that are qualified. I think simply what we're asking for is a plan to be put forth. We have a plan. We have a plan that's in front of you guys that we want to present and show you guys a vision, and then we have a plan to make that happen. Obviously, New Bern is an up-and-coming vibrant city. There's plenty of different things going on. However, we're just kind of misrepresented as it relates to minorities. And minorities are not just obviously African-Americans. We have terrible numbers as it relates to women, the LBGt community, and other different situations, you know, Asians, Mexicans, et cetera. What we do not want is just to kind of get a quota. We don't want to just put this in a situation and you guys just kind of, we kind of hit some numbers. We really want to work this plan that we've kind of put together and get you guys to adopt that plan. Can we go to the next slide? What we're asking to do is us to have some accountability around this. We've kind of put together a couple of different things in regards to that, that... You can go to the next slide. So, what we're looking for in a nutshell is to kind of get equity and diversity and inclusion officer, okay? And with that being said, we're looking to have a contracted position with you guys and also have an advisory committee that speaks to four community members and then three members that are appointed by the board. With that group, we would like to kind of work with you guys and that diversity and equity and inclusion officer to kind of put together and implement this plan that we've kind of been talking about. I know in conversation, there was some discussion in regards to training and training being needed. I think that is appropriate. However, I think that we would like this input to come from the community and not necessarily the board at large. I think in conversation, again, you guys have, the people that were at the table, mentioned that they do see this as something that we need to work on. I want to pay it forward. There's no need to kind of talk about what's happened in the past. There's nothing we can do about that. But what we can do today is look at the numbers, look at the situation that we're in, and try to move forward and put together and implement this plan. So, with that being said, what we would ask is that, and the plan, I think you guys have received that plan. I don't know if everyone's seen. I know there was a meeting over at the Omega Center with some of the people that were running for office here. Some people had not seen it, some people had seen it. But again, if you look at the numbers that Bailey has shared with you guys based on what you provided, it's obviously a huge gap. And I don't want to be ignorant to the fact that maybe there has been some applicants that are not qualified, but I think that we have a vision of recruitment, advertising, and then having an identified person to work to bring minorities into Craven County. Obviously, we're a tourist city, and not just from a standpoint of employment, from minority contracts and other things in that nature, I think is what we're looking for. And on today, I think it would be a win for us for you guys to at least consider a contracted position for that.
Could you explain contract position?
Explain contract position. You want to speak?
Well, we're looking for, we'd like to have somebody who is not necessarily a member of the city employment, you know, like not creating a brand-new position on the city staff. We'd rather have somebody who's an independent contractor, like a long-term, three to five-year with the option to renew, so that it's somebody who can be separate from the city and really focus, dig in on the diversity, equity, inclusion, finding those accountability markers, ways to make this measurable, and ways to make it sustainable, and be able to work with all the departments in the city, really.
Have you been able to find other cities that have employed that type? Give me some examples.
Durham.
Durham County, I mean.
Durham.
Wake County recently just had a show made in that position.
What is the population of those communities?
It's over thirty thousand, but I think in your response to that, and I think you mentioned this in a meeting, Sabrina, that our city's a little smaller, but I think we have a much bigger problem than they do. If you look at the numbers, we're just not, it's just not reflected, it's just not reflected well. And I think in Durham County...
These are just other places that are similarly, that are smaller than us and around a similar size than us just across the country. When we drew for our plan, that's the first place we looked were places that were similar around our size. I think the first place we found was Vermont, but we have these places here in Philadelphia, Ohio, Illinois, Michigan, New York. And then they're pretty active in the Triangle area. It's something that they're working on. And there's not really a size for this kind of plan.
Not at all. And I think, again, if you look at the numbers that we have, you know, it's one population that is very large. And again, it's not just, minorities don't just speak to African-Americans. I think we need to be clear on that. There, women are not represented properly in the city government here. And I think it needs to be an identified plan, someone that is working day in and day out to help recruitment for this area.
And do you have, in your research, how does that person work more closely with the HR director or the city manager or department heads? What is the flow of that position within city government?
That person works directly with that advisory committee that we speak to of those seven members, four of those members being appointed by the community and three of those members being appointed by you guys.
And so, again, how does that coordinate and flow with the regular four hundred and fifty-six employees of the city? Do you, does that contract position consult with HR more so or the manager?
I think they'll probably end up working, I mean, consult with the city manager more. They'll have to do a little bit of work within every department, and they'll also be regularly presenting to you all. There's a job description, I think, that hopefully you all have available to you that has a bit of a longer list of the people that they would have to interact with. Because there would, of course, be, they're not, you know, the personnel's not the people hiring. There's lots of people that are hiring and doing that kind of thing that would need to get some of that training that we talked about. They need to be involved in that outreach. So, I think they'd be working with a variety of people on the staff.
Question. When you spoke with HR, did you see, find any findings that anything that they was doing illegal in hiring? Did they share with you their hiring practices? Did they share with you when a person comes in to fill out an application, normally it's not completed? And I'm just trying to understand where you're going and how you got there?
Yeah.
And what you see that, that we are not doing that we need to do? I'm just trying to get an understanding on that part.
Sunny, I think her name, Hayes, was a part of the meeting that we had. I think she, in my opinion, she gave us very good information. I don't think it was a right or wrong. Definitely, I don't think it was anything illegal that was being done. I think just from a standpoint of the recruitment process for minorities that come to New Bern had not, there hadn't been an identified... There hasn't just been enough for that. Hadn't been an identified plan. And based on the numbers, we want someone that is directly working to recruit minorities to New Bern based on the population in which we have. But I think she gave us some good information. She may declare that she was not the person that hired the department heads. She didn't over, she was not the person that did all the hiring for each person, so. But I don't think it was necessarily anything illegal that we kind of felt. We just felt like it wasn't enough being done to recruit minorities to the area.
Do you think enough people are applying?
Well, what we understood is that there is, they post the jobs on the website and that's where it's available. We think we have in our plan, there's a couple of different sections about outreach and recruitment where there's just many more ways to go out and actively be recruiting those qualified candidates. Because that's often what you hear is a lack of qualified candidates, and what can we do about that? There's a lot of things that we can do about that, but it's a full-time job. It's not something that we can put on anybody else or try to make them carry on because it's really actively seeking out different organizations within the community and within the state and building relationships to be able to get this qualified applicant pool.
You say there's a lot that you can do for that?
Well, absolutely. There are different recruitment mechanisms that we can put in place. There's different advertising that we can do. Some of the ways that they were, that was mentioned to us in regards to how jobs are posted here, it's, you know, kind of, just kind of a standard way. And again, I'm not ignorant to the fact that some people don't want to come back to New Bern, that leave here and go get an education. But in the same sentence, there's African-Americans and/or minorities that do have, that are engineers, that are people that have qualification and credentials to do some of these higher-up jobs versus, you know, if you look at the population of people that work in this workforce here, they're cutting grass and teaching people how to dribble a basketball.
How many different ways that the city uses for the hiring practice?
I don't know how many different ways it is. I know one of the main things that was spoken to us in regards to was the website. I mean, I'm sorry, the internet. You know, jobs are being posted on the internet. But what we're saying is that there are something called HBCUs across the country and that we think that we should have someone in this position that are identifying these HBCUs and going to work directly with them to do more recruitment. I don't know all the ways maybe someone in HR can speak to that, but the ways that we got it was basically the internet.
So, you feel that they're not doing enough?
Well, again, I don't, I don't...
Is that what you're saying? They're not doing enough to...
Yeah, but I don't want to look at it...
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah. There are other ways that can be, there are other options that have not been looked at to get minorities into Craven County.
But did she share all the different options with you guys to make you crystal clear?
She told us that they post, if they have a process for posting it, and if they're invited to a job fair, that they will certainly come out, but we're not looking for passive, we're looking for the active. Find all the job fairs, go out to those places, be in the high schools, be in the colleges, be with the local center, be doing those things.
Yeah.
Our woman here, go ahead.
First and foremost, I just want to thank the New Bern People's Assembly, Curtis Stewart and Bailey, Ms. Antoinette, for all the hard work that you've done to pull this together. I'd also like to add that I thank our HR department, Ms. Sunny Hayes does a wonderful job. But there are things that she has to do on her day-to-day that's in her job description. And based on the statistics, numbers do not lie. It is important that we have equity. This is the main important purpose of this presentation is equity. And if we truly say that everything comes together here, I think it's imperative that we do make this a contracted position that will fall under and will work directly with the city manager because we want to be able to attract, you know, minorities to our city, to stay within our city for these positions. I think it's imperative that we truly look at the information that has been provided and we take a seriously look at the fact that although it may be a very hot topic or a way to express it, we are not doing enough as a city to make sure that our city represents the population at hand. It may not be something that we can accept, may hurt some feelings, but at the end of the day, we do have an obligation to make sure that we have diversity, equity, and inclusion within our city and our city government. And I think, and I appreciate the work that you guys done, and I hope the board does tonight decide to adopt this position. The budget has not passed yet, so I think we can find some money to fund it. We've had ample enough time to review this. They've sat down many times in meetings. I've had the ability to sit with Antoinette. But I do think tonight, we do need to be more progressive instead of reactive and make a decision that we care about all citizens, all populations, all, you know, protected classes in regards to diversity. And we pass to create a position or create a contract so that we can have an expert come in here and make sure that we are creating an equitable atmosphere within city government.
I would like to remind the board of, I don't know how many, how long ago it was, where we had our HR director to come forward and tell us all the many ways and how she's going out and recruiting and where she advertises and the number of newspapers that she advertises in. You know, these positions are posted in all the departments. And, you know, I personally think she's doing a wonderful job. And she, you know, and till she tells us that she can't handle it anymore, she just can't get the job done, which I don't think that she's gonna do. I don't see any reason. I mean, don't we advertise also with the Employment Security Commission?
We do.
So, anybody can walk in the Employment Security Commission and look for jobs anywhere across New Bern, correct? Or North Carolina? You know, and the city of New Bern jobs are advertised there.
I don't think it's necessarily that she's not doing enough. It's the principle of, like Mr. Stewart said, you have HBCUs. This person is dedicated, who is a certified, they are licensed historically.
Black colleges.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
They go into the community and they search and look for qualified applicants to come work, not just to cut grass and teach children to dribble a ball, but they sit in higher levels in our city. In that same information, we speak today, just like we spoke at the Omega Center, there is only three people of color that sit, or a minority that sit in high positions. You have the city assistant manager, you have the city assistant attorney, and you have Ms. Hayes. Okay, and Public Works. So, we have four minorities that sit in these positions, and we have four hundred and fifty-six employees. They're not saying that Ms. Hayes is not doing a good job. She does a wonderful job. But this is a separate situation that needs to be rectified. We need equity within our local government, and we have a responsibility to do that. It's not a negative thing. This is not anything negative. This is bringing together. Our statement is everything comes together here. That's what equity is. Creating this contract, creating this position for there to be outreach. Ms. Hayes can't go to every event in the community. She still has to do her day-to-day that has to do with, it's a partnership. Don't think of it as a gift. It's a partnership to make sure that we're finding qualified applicants. And if we have a group of individuals that are coming here and displaying this information and explaining where the discrepancies are, we have an obligation, I feel, to follow through with it.
Foster, I have a question. Ms. Hayes is not the only one that's working in her office, right? Did you get an opportunity, I'm just asking questions, to break it down with all of the entities of all of the places that you send information out to let people know that we have positions that's open? From their conversation, it's just like, I'm hearing from them that it was just a very... From their conversation, it's just like, I'm I'm hearing from them that it was just a very small group of information that's actually sent out to people to respond. So they're speaking from the term that they have a broader.
So what I can do is I can speak from what what HR has done in the past. And and Brenda, if you could give me the date of that meeting, um where where um where the Director of Human Resources came and presented to the board. And she actually did a very good presentation where she talked about um how recruiting is done, uh the selection process, uh the websites we use and things like that. And and I think Sonya can come up i- if you want her to, and she could refresh uh your memories on some of those things, but.
Well, I would like for that to happen.
John, excuse me, Alderman Kinsley, before you do that, you want to speak?
If you don't mind, before I move on to the door. A a couple of things, uh Bobby, just to be clear, uh no one's saying, I've had some good conversations with Sonya. Uh I think she's doing a hell of a job, right? I think uh she's made that pretty clear. Uh but I do think what has happened is not working because the numbers haven't changed, uh just to make one point. Two, this isn't a political stance for us, okay? We've come to some of these, some of you guys on this board to talk about this and bring this to the agenda and people haven't done it, okay? I want to be clear on that. This is not, I'm not a politician, I have a community side, I'm a businessman, okay? So this is not a time for grandstanding, this is not a time for any of that. We want some outcomes, okay? We met with you guys, I again, and 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 people can say what they want to say, I don't care, I can take it. We've sat down with people, uh our Chair Antoinette had to 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 approach Sabrina to have this conversation. And a against her own will, she she didn't want to do this. She uh be honest with you, she didn't want to be involved with it because she felt like it was gonna be more controversy. However, she did it. Mayor, you came to this meeting, you sat down, you guys recognized that there was a problem, we talked about it. Uh what that problem is, is we do need more inclusion. We 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 need, wh- wh- all we're asking is saying, hey, we have done the work. Bailey, Jim, we've sat down, they've gotten to work, they they pulled this data, you have given us the data. Sonya has been very open in in the conversation with us. What has happened in the past ain't work. All we're saying is, hey, we have a vision, we have a plan, let us work together to try to make this a better city for everybody. Uh and again, it's not just about African Americans, it is about minorities in general, women as well. We are not, it's not represented well. Uh and so I just want to be clear on that. This isn't a a a um i- i- it's 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 kind of baffling that some of this, I I think, in fact, we went to some other individuals to come and sit down and have this conversation with us. And people turned it down. That's that's disheartening. At the end of the day, we have three African Americans on this board right here. This is a problem. I mean, thanks to city, you you, I'm sorry.
We, they represent what's represented in the city, a third of the city.
Well, on this board they do, but not in the workforce. In your workforce, they don't, unfortunately. I mean, good, I'm glad you guys went and found this gentleman here. He's an African American, he in speaking with him, he said, hey, I'm coming from the military, I'm coming from Havelock. This was, this just made sense for me. Again, I'm not ignorant to the fact, Johnny, that people, African Americans may, some may not be qualified. But you can't tell me we don't have engineers. North Carolina antique is one of the best engineering schools in the country. I mean, there are people that are out here, we just have to do a better job in going to find them. And all we're saying is, hey, let's work together, let's put together this small task force, this representation of this uh advocacy committee. And let's work together to try to identify someone so that they they can help with recruitment in the area. I mean, that's simple, it's 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 not a a a big, it's not rocket science, it's not gonna hurt the city to do that. You guys were elected by the people. The people are saying this is an issue. We cannot just sit here and ignore that because we got an HR person. The HR person has eight other departments to worry about. This is the situation we really need to look at. And we would appreciate if you guys would give us four votes to sit there and at least have another conversation uh about this.
Alderman Best, go ahead, Ald- Alderman Best, and I'll come back to you.
Um I thank you both for coming here today and Ms. Antoinette and the People's Assembly for compiling all this information and bringing it forth to the board. Um and I do agree with my colleague of Alderman Harris. Um we do need a DEI officer in place because you can't sit here and just dismiss the numbers. The numbers show what our our percentages of employees as opposed to the minority employees that work with the city. Not only, you know, I with me, when we have positions open within our leadership, within this city, um you know, we had department heads, division heads, supervisors. Yeah, I would like to see a pool of applicants, that this city would go out and try to find a pool of applicants that are diverse. And like you said, in the past, it's 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 not worked and we can see that by the numbers. But also with this DEI officer in place, not only will they, you know, supply or the recruitment of minorities. But they can also help come to the aid of our city workforce right now, where we have minorities in 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 the city. Um this equity officer can come and present to the city workshops, uh leadership classes. I mean, they can provide so much more and 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 have this, you know, uh uh meetings where that we can have our city employees with supervisors get together, you learn my culture, I learn your culture. Then we both can understand each other and we can work together better. And and I can see there is a partnership when it comes to, we have employees right now with low morale. The the with already within the city's workforce, there's low morale. And if we can have somebody come in with the skills and qualifications and come out there and can be build that relationship. That's gonna be a plus for the city. It's gonna move us in the right direction and it's gonna keep us from having such a high turnover of employees. And that's what we're facing right now. So I'm I I'm for moving forward with this. Like you said, we can sit down and discuss this more, but we got to have, we got to do something. And and we just can't continue to keep talking about it, we got to put it in in action.
Thank you. Um thank I thank you to to you all and to the People's Assembly for meeting with me. And you know, as I was contacted, I said before I would agree to put it on the agenda. I really wanted to know more about it, I just didn't want to put it on the agenda. But I see, I see several facets to it that I think we're missing. I think we're trying to put, is it the bath of the baby before the bathwater, how that saying goes? But I think that's that's the issue here right now, based on my two meetings and the conversations with you all. Um I, you know, in questioning Sonya, um our last position was for um Public Works Director. And so we did put out something to black engineers, there's a Black Engineering Society of America, that's exactly what it's called. It was put out there, no responses, we didn't receive any applicants that applied at the level of of that job description, applied for it. And we agreed in our meetings, could we do better with the HBCUs? Absolutely, we feel like we need to be more on-site, more direct contact with them. But people coming out of that school lack educa- lack the experience. We all know, those of us that went to college and tried to get a job right outside of college, Bailey, I know you, you know that experience. How difficult it is because everybody says you don't have any experience. So you've got to get your foot in the door someplace. So they're not coming to New Bern. They're going to the Durhams and the Rallies and the places where they can, where they can get the foot in the door. Because w- we we have to work on more jobs in this community. We have to work on more social structure, more housing structure. There's not good affordable housing for people coming in. Um the mayor will remember this, Johnny Ray will remember this as well, that um a cou- a few managers ago, we had um hired a city manager and his wife couldn't find a job, so they didn't, he didn't take the job. Because she could not find a a upper level job that was available in this community, there just weren't enough. And we have work to do, we have work to do as a city, we have work to do as a community, as a government. And my suggestion and what I feel is, we first and foremost need training. So I think that we need to make sure that our directors are trained so they know how to administer diversity, equity and inclusion to their staff and their hiring. Because they're the ones that are hiring um those supervisor and other positions. So I would support and to move forward with a a contract for someone to come in and do training. Let's start that process. Then let's work together to start building this with the People's Assembly. Let's join forces and try to find some better outcomes, better social outcomes for people who want to move here. Talk to people and ask them why they're not, people of color, of minorities, why they're not coming to New Bern. And let's get to the root of the problem and find out what it is. Is it housing? Is it social structure? What is it that makes them not want to come back to New Bern? Mr. Stewart, how many times have I asked you, why don't you move to New Bern? And and it is a valid question. So what I'm saying is, is that um I want to take the steps. I don't want to jump into something just because it's the new buzzword and that's what it seems to be. I want to solve the the whole problem and I want to look at it, you know, totally. And and from top to to bottom, rather than just trying to to throw something in there that I don't think we're necessarily prepared for. Because you can talk all you want, if you, we are in an environment today, anybody out there who owns a business, where it is difficult to find employees, period. And that's just, that's the world we live in right now. Will it change in six months? It may, may change in a year, I don't know. But I think we need to take steps and that's what I'm willing to do. I've I've heard what you're saying, I agree with many points of what you're saying. But based on those conversations, I feel we do some training, we take the steps, we start, and then we build on that. And we start building and continue to build on that.
Sort of the point there when we say that the city workforce reflecting the people that live here will help improve things for the people that live here. So when we say that we're looking for ways to get more people to live here, well, we have people here that we could be including in what we're doing. That might help move that conversation forward. And training is a super important part, it's a big major part. And that's one of the reasons that we feel like there is this, we do need to contract a position where somebody can get give this all out. But it's and it's not just training to the department heads and people, it's also making sure that the people of the city understand what we're doing here. What diversity, equity, inclusion are. Because diversity, equity, inclusion is a way that is kind of a new buzzword, but affirmative action plans have been around since the seventies. There have been many, many cities that have been doing this for a very long time and have had positive outcomes.
But it is confusing when you say affirmative action, because affirmative action is illegal now. You know, so so the I, it is confusing to us in the older world that when it did come out in the seventies, the importance of affirmative action and and what it did and what it um finally produced for people of color and people of minority status. But it's different, it's different today. Now it's become illegal to to have quotas. And you stated that in your opening sentence, that it's not based on quota. But it it's kind of offsetting when you see the name of your plan as affirmative action plan.
But then is it also upsetting if we call it diversity, equity and inclusion too? Cause that's a buzzword?
No, no, I mean, I, no, I understand that. I because that, I I totally, I totally understand that and understand where where you're coming from. I'm just saying for me right now, um it's important that we take those steps, that we start to build and continue to build. If you want to change the community, I don't know that government can change a community. You know, maybe the People's Assembly hire this person and start getting out into the community and doing that. While we're trying to train and hire and recruit people to come work and it's like a two-pronged thing. I I'm not saying that might be the answer, but I'm offering it as an additional suggestion or solution.
That makes sense. And the thing, other thing that we can offer too, while we're talking about that training, is the experts that helped us with our plan from the North Carolina chapter of the National Conference of Black Lawyers. Their chairman is willing to come down and give uh workshops for all of you or for any interested citizens, anybody that is still feeling like, what do those words mean? What is this? We're able to bring people here to help get that process started.
Curtis, I want to share something.
Alderman Harris, then I'll get to you, sir.
Um so just so it's on record, I would like to um speak to the fact that in early April, I think of this year, maybe last year, can't remember. Um me and Barbara Best and a few outside community leaders sat down um with Antoinette Boski. And we had the preliminary discussion of this plan. Um and at the time, it was still being called affirmative action. Um and in those notes, I stated that mm that probably might be a touchy subject to bring to this board. Um shortly after, I ended up in the hospital and there's things that transpired um at the Omega Center that I felt I needed to pull back and step away from it. Um and here we are, again, I'm I'm excited that you guys were still able to push through those controversial situations and get the individuals to put it on the board. I ultimately feel it was important for you to sit down with counterparts that do not look like the three individuals of color on this board to explain what diversity, equity, inclusion are, just in case they have any concerns. But it lifts accountability, right? It lifts um advocacy and it lifts education. Um at the budget meeting, I did present um and forwarded a contact in regards to the real equity um that comes from the National League of Cities that does this. There's a difference between uh someone being trained to then go and teach other people about DEI. You need someone that is certified or has a degree in it and has a passion. Because it's not just about diversity, equity and inclusion, it's about the culture in your workforce. Um culture can pertain to being accepted because you're in LGBTQ or um you have a specific religion or you're transgender, all of those things. That's what diversity, equity and inclusion means. And that also includes making sure that you're going out and doing the necessary needs to find people for these positions. Again, like I said, um you know, i- it is political season. But I've stood by this since two thousand eighteen, when I brought it to the board. Um and regardless of where where we are now, I'm gonna support diversity, equity and inclusion because it's important. To me, it's not a buzzword, this is something that should have been done, hasn't been done, and we need to do it. I don't think we need to continue to have these side conversations and kick it down the the road. We need to stand and be progressive and be accountable for the information. It is in black and white, don't care the numbers. We are not representing our city the way it needs to be. I don't care if we're a small city or a big city, it's the principle that this shows our community that we do have appreciation, understanding and um wanting to make sure that our our local government, which governs the city, that makes the policies, you know, a lot of things in the day-to-day that there is equity within the city. Again, it's not a negative thing. It's not a neg- I don't think the New Bern People's Assembly should have to pay for this. I think it's our responsibility, whatever the contracted amount is, I I I mean, those are the further discussions. But I do think that this is something, not, I I believe and I know in my heart that this is something that needs to be done. You can sit down and have a meeting, but it's moving forward is to show that you really do understand or you want to understand or better the situation. They're not saying, again, that the HR department is not doing their job. This is a another tool in the toolbox that is needed. And if we look as a community, if we look at this with a racial equity lens and we see in black and white that these numbers don't equate to what our city looks like, I don't understand what the problem is. On why we can't have a position created or we contract out for less things that benefit. We contract people out for less things that benefit. This is a benefit to our whole city. This is a benefit to our communities, this is a benefit to everybody. I don't care that it's election season. I care that y'all need to do the right thing and implement what they've done. They've done the work for us, they've done the work already. So it's our responsibility and obligations to move forward. I appreciate you bringing it to the board. But move forward with bringing it to the board, a conversation is a conversation.
Just a quick follow-up.
Alderman Kinsley, then I'll get back to you.
To get to that though, how many people, do we have to fire people and lay people off? Because it could take twenty years to get to the number.
No, we don't have to fire or lay anybody off, but do we just stop at four hundred and fifty-six employees?
Well, that may be what our our maximum budget can hold.
Right, but when we bring so much economic development in here, that creates a tax?
That's sort of why it's a bit of the long, though, why the idea is the long-term position, because we realize that. It's not like there's a bunch of open positions, that's why there's growing the relationships, building the contacts. There's so many other things that they could be focusing on, so that has some positions come up. Cause we don't, I mean, firing people, that would be, that would be ridiculous, obviously, anyway.
Alderman Kinsley.
Curtis, the job that you guys have done is very good. And and sharing with uh our HR department the things that she's doing that is very good, the things that you guys are doing is very good. So the thing that it is now is coming together, working together to make something happen for everyone. It's just like riding around in in the city, you see health warning signs on back of cars, on buildings, on billboards. Everybody's is looking for a job, a lot individuals not looking for a job. But it's not here to try to beat up on no one, it's just trying to educate where you fall short at and where you can make a difference. And that's basically what I'm here, I'm just trying to learn something. I'm not here trying to sell anything or trying to win anything. And that's basically what I'm here. I'm just trying to learn something. I'm not here trying to sell anything or trying to win anything. I just want to see that, to make sure that the staff that works for the city, that make sure that we're doing everything correct. That's all. And if we've fallen short and we can learn something from you guys, we're willing to do that. We're willing to come together. It's not sitting here trying to beat you up or, or say that we got to do this here or talk about this or that there. It's about working together, making it happen, okay? That's all we want to do.
Oh, one here.
Yeah, I just have, go ahead.
Can I finish, please?
That was the mayor.
Go ahead, sir. I didn't, I thought you were third.
I mean, I'm not here. I'm, I just want to make sure that, like, when you came here and you, I asked all the questions about the staff to make sure that the staff and the city manager is in place. She brought a presentation to us and if they seen that it was something short there, that's the department that they run for the city. My job is different than what their job is, okay? We make a decision together here to make it work. And if you see where it's very short and we need to make a difference, let's sit down with Ms. Hayes and the manager to see what can be done. Because we federally and state, that's what we do. Those are our governing bodies. That's what we run by. We don't do a quota or anything like that. So if we could work with those two individuals to find out how we can make it work, that's what they do. Give them an opportunity to work their magic with you guys to bring this thing together. Well, you can pull signs down from all over town, not just here, all over the whole city and find jobs for everybody. Just not here because there's applications everywhere that needs to be completed. And let's do the right thing and see can we do that. Thank you guys for coming out tonight and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. So if the board was to, like Ms. Bingle stated, start with square one and hiring, um, someone to come here and do some training, would you feel like what you presented today, that you at least got a win in starting that?
Well, I, yes and no. I think that depending on who that person is, if that person can come from some experts that we work with, I think that would be a start to at least have that conversation. Uh, you know, we, we don't anticipate solving this problem today. This is a long systemic issue, right? Uh, but I think that if we could at least start the process, I think that, that is a win. Uh, we would love for you guys to adopt the plan, uh, but to move forward in some capacity first. You know, a lot of, we would stand here, you know, thirty minutes talking about this. We need some type of outcome, you know? Jeff, I would love to hear from you and your opinion of this.
Well, it ultimately in places where this is effective, the training is a win, but ultimately in the places where these things are effective, those are not the key components. It's those other active proactive parts of the job of going out and doing stuff. So the training would absolutely be a start. We would love that, especially if we could have some of our experts that have taught us in here to train. But it is, is still, it would, we acknowledge it's a very first step.
If we could.
Before you say that, because I want to, so adopting the plan would be the one that was presented in regards to four community members and three board members appointing three people to make seven to work with the city?
Those seven would be part of the hiring task force for finding that contractor to come do the work. For if you had chosen, if you chose to create a position at the DEI director, you would want that person to be hired using that citizen advisory board and they would help with making those decisions. Um, we'd find them having.
So would that be a diverse group?
Okay, excuse me.
There's a description, we, there's a description of that advisory board in your packet, which means that it is attached to the agenda. So for anybody that might be here that wanted to read that, that document is in your jacket.
If we could at this time, I'd like to hear from staff as to where we are. We've had several meetings. Could you give us an update from between HR and manager and whoever else? Where we are, where your ideas are as staff, where we need to go?
Absolutely. So the first thing I'd like to tell you, since, since you appointed me as manager in September of, of twenty twenty-one, um, diversity, equity, inclusion has been something that's always been on my mind and, and I think that, that's reflective in Parks and Recreation when I came here and staff have hired because of the qualifications of the position of the employee. Same thing when, when I hired our assistant city manager, I hired him on qualifications he had and what I knew he could bring to the table. Same thing with the director of Public Works. He's a minority. Um, when we looked at the application, we were looking at was qualifications. He ended up being the best candidate. We chose him. Our finance director is a minority. She is a female. I made the recommendation for Ms. Ostrom. The board, the board went along with that recommendation. We currently have an interim director of Parks and Recreation who is a female. She was selected for that interim position because she is the best qualified for that position. Um, in our next budget for FY twenty-three, we are making a recommendation to put funds in for diversity, equity, and inclusion training. I've gone through it, you know, some Parks and Recreation. It, it's tough training, but it, but it's eye-opening and it's definitely worth it for, for our employees to go through and, and it does change the culture. Um, we have a long way to go with the city. A lot of the cities in North Carolina have a long way to go, but we've got to start somewhere. And I think with the training, that, that's our, our, our really first big step. But let's look at our, our, our hires that we have made and, and I'm, I'm pleased with that record we, we have, we have started. And then we're going to continue. Again, the most qualified applicants is what we want. Whatever color they are, whatever race or, or gender, that doesn't matter. The goal is to get the best qualified for the city of New Bern.
I don't think anyone's disputing that, I don't think anyone's disputing that we want the, the best qualified. I think the problem is, is where we're looking to find the best qualified when it comes to minorities. Like he gave an example of the HBCUs. I just, I, I don't want the board or, or the peers to feel like this is a negative thing or an attack. It's not. It's literally an addition that is specifically geared towards correcting the issue at hand that they've spoke on. That's, that's it. I, it's, it's not a bad thing. Um, you know, and I think when we kind of are on the defense, it shows, um, where we're at, at, as a board. I mean, again, I, I think they presented enough information. I mean, if it's something that has to be stewed on, but I mean, they're, you're basically asking for an advisory board to be created, a citizen advisory board to create, be created?
To hire the, to help hire the position of the diversity, equity, and inclusion director. That is what our advisory board was for, so that the people, community could have a hand in that hiring process to make sure that it's somebody that would represent the interests of the communities most affected by the plan.
So the problem is getting four votes for that position before you can create the community advisory board?
And, 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 you know, to Foster's point, and I, I, I can appreciate what you just said. I mean, that can't go without notice that there has been some changes, uh, since you've been city manager, uh, in, in regards to that. I do think that there still needs to be some attention put on that though. Uh, and if, and if in the upcoming budget, I guess it's July maybe, I don't know when you guys.
A lot of months.
Uh, if, if the thought is to, to, uh, implement training, we would just appreciate if we could recommend or you guys could work with us in regards to, uh, someone that is an expert in this field that can come in and train the staff in regards to that and then maybe have a follow-up. I think that would at least be a win for the situation. Again, I, I, your points were well-taken and some of that I, I was, wasn't, I didn't know. I knew some of it, but not all of it, so I couldn't appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Well, I apologize because Jeff wanted, uh, Jeff was going to speak and I kind of jumped the boat when they asked him his thoughts.
So, um, I agree with Alderman Kinsey. Thank you for putting information together. Um, it's not something that we typically see. Uh, we get weekly and monthly reports. I think one good thing would be to add a DNI section to our, at least our monthly report so we can see how we're tracking. So I appreciate you bringing it to light. Um, I, I deal with this every day. Um, I manage a lot of people. I hire a lot of people. Um, I have connections with some HBCUs throughout the state. But one, one thing that I have a concern with, and I think you all do as well, is keeping our youth here. I know I see Alderman White out there and we, we've had many conversations, him and, his son and I went to school together. His son doesn't live here anymore. He moved away. I was fortunate enough to be able to find a job and be able to stay in New Bern. Um, outreach throughout the state to these other places, that, that's fine, but I want us to put a program together to where we start with our middle school and high school students that are here and have something here for them to stay. Yes, they're probably going to have to go away to college because we don't have a four-year college here. I understand that. But, um, I, I don't have an issue really with anything you've presented except the hiring of the position. Um, I think that that's a, that's a significant step. Uh, we've got many needs throughout the city that affect things every day. Uh, I believe that if given the opportunity, now that you've presented the problem, give us the opportunity to address it. When you put the committee together and you include three aldermen, I'm sure you were just trying to be inclusive of the board. Um, I, I don't know if there's ever been an alderman that sat on a committee to hire anybody.
It's not aldermen, it's aldermen would appoint three members and then.
Okay, all right, well, great. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. But yeah, I, I, I would like for our staff, I mean, we've had city manager turnover. Um, fortunately, we haven't had turnover in the HR department. Sonya Hayes has been here. She, I think everybody agrees she does a great job. I, I would like to see our staff put a program together. They've heard the concern from the community. They've heard the concern from the board. I'd like to see our staff put a program together and let us know what our staff recommends we do.
I'm just last, I do want to add, so, um, Alderman Harris, I have not been offended or anything by what you've said and I, I, I enjoyed the conversation. I mean, it's been good, good conversation we had in two meetings and, um, I just want us to work and build. I don't, I don't want it to throw all together and not get the end result that we want and that is changing the culture and, and teaching us all what we need to know to move forward. So that's why I was a proponent of starting with this training, let city staff try to move this and pull it together and, and let's see how we go. If we're really failing, then we're failing and we'll know when, because you'll let us know. And, um, we can move forward from that, but I, I would feel comfortable with, with, and going in that direction with money in the budget for the training. Um, I know you, it wouldn't be internal training. We'd hire a consultant or somebody.
Well, I did, I gave that information.
Okay, yeah.
Have you guys reached out to the budget?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Well, the hiring, the hiring will take place later.
But I'm just saying, they're literally from this, from North Carolina leaves a municipality. Like when I went to the conference and when that first conference I went to in DC, that's exactly what they do. So I really think it'd be great for you to reach out to them because they do all of this to help cities.
My question would be to, to Foster, I guess, is, is, is it, and I don't know if you have to be the person that makes this decision, but understanding that you said that this would be something that you would include in the budget, uh, would you at least let us submit some names to you or people that we're working with, uh, to come in and provide some of that training? I guess would be one question. And then two, in regards to what Jeff said, uh, a program, uh, we would love to be a part of that and see what that framework looks, that frameworks looks like.
Over here in Sudbury.
Correct. And, and so some of the work has already been done if this plan is looked at and, and appreciate and or, uh, uh, apply to some of the things that we're talking about. Some of the work has been done. But I guess for me, uh, you know, we would like to at least see you guys adopt those two things. If, if nothing else, you know, at least work with us and, and let us recommend one of the consultants that we've worked with that has experience in this to come in and train versus an in-house trainer or someone that you guys choose. And then two, uh, the plan that Jeff mentioned, I think is a, a great idea if you guys would put that together and see how we can begin to do that outreach at our earlier stages.
I, I believe that, and Sonya can correct me, she has already started with an internship program. Is that correct, Sonya? Um, at the school level, the internship program? So that is, that is taking students and having them intern within the city of New Bern, maybe to see if they want to even do in that field or like, so I think that's a good thing. Also too, I would suggest bringing the Volt Center and the Community College to the table because they are doing an amazing job of putting people into the workforce every single day. And again, get, they get into the workforce, they can get experience that could potentially bring them into the city and then they can be trapped. So it'd be good to get some of those statistics and join forces with the Community College and see what we can do. Because the Volt Center is really the win-win we've had for our community, big time.
So I can go back to my question of, uh, based on what Foster said, would you guys be willing to allow, uh, a qualified person from our group, uh, to come in and assist in that training? I think is the question I have again.
So, so what I'll say is, 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 uh, our HR department is getting, uh, quotes from qualified firms to do training and we're happy to, to talk with you and, and get some information from you as well.
Okay. And that process is already started?
It has started, yes. We'll make sure Sonya reaches out to you.
Okay.
And in regards to the other question for the programming, you're saying you want to be able to.
Yeah, I don't know what that looks like from your perspective, Jeff. Uh, I think.
We're happy to work with you.
Yeah, and I think that if you look at our plan, we have an outreach plan that's in there. I mean, some of the, some of the things that you guys are mentioning, we have provided to you. Uh, and, and I think that we don't want this to be just put back in, in your hands without some community involvement. I think that's the key and I think what's happened in the past is, is again, it hasn't worked. So we, we really want to be a part of that process and, and I guess that's what we're trying to figure out. How does that work?
So do we need to give some direction? I, I don't think a motion is necessary, but I personally agree that they're already doing the work. They should already have a seat at the table. That would be the E in equity. Um, but I don't know legally how that works in regards to the HR department. Um, so I don't want to speak because I'm not an expert, but how would that work out or relate to, uh, liaisons from the New Bern People's Assembly working in correlation, coalition with, um, the HR department in this process?
I, I, I don't, I don't know what the board is imagining as a collaboration. I, I, what I heard Alderman Odom say was that he wanted to put the ball in staff's court to present to city manager a program to address some of these issues. That's what I understood.
And they want to be able to be a part of creating that program. Am I correct? I don't want to speak out of term. I'm just trying to get somewhere.
I, I think I understand, but I think what you're saying is let staff put some stuff together and then bring them in and, and work once they put something together. Is that what you're saying?
It's really the board's decision. I'm just interpreting what I'm hearing.
Okay.
And I, and opening speaker Alderman Odom, I, I thought he was.
Boy, they keep saying that they've done all this work and they have. So the work's been done. They've presented it to us. Let our staff, who is a professional staff who deals with this every day, they understand the laws, the EO requirement, all that stuff. They've heard both sides of it. That's a professional department within our city. Let them take that, come back to the board and say, we heard you. This is what we recommend. And then it's up to us to say, yeah, your name.
You're saying our HR department?
Correct. Based off of the information that.
That they give us.
Sure.
So you should get with the HR department. I think that's what they're saying.
And do you feel like there is?
Well, you know, I think there's still some gray area with that and with that, kind of what's the timeframe in regards to that? What does that look like? Uh, I still think there's.
Sixty days. How about that? Is that good?
I think that's fair.
Is that fair to everybody? I'm not trying to speak for all the board, but.
Well, I'm trying to really understand, but so can you finish saying what you were saying? Like I, I want to make sure that you took all this time to have these meetings, countless meetings over, I think you've been working on this two and a half years, I think?
I guess what it sounds like here is that would they, instead of, rather than contract somebody to oversee this process, like the staff to find ways to incorporate it into what they're doing and oversee that? And that's probably not our favorite decision, but you know, that's called compromise and everything. But we, we guess we'd like to see some movement on it. We'd like to see within the sixty days, what exactly are you going to do? What are your concrete steps? We don't want your general idea or your philosophy. We want to see the list of steps. And I think it's fair to say you would like to have the staff take it on first. We'd like to hear what that's going to look like and then we'll all go from there.
Just to, to, so there's, so for me to speak on it, because I know y'all about tired. There's a difference between an HR department and someone that has gone to school, certified and has a degree in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Again, I'm not negating that the HR department is doing a wonderful job. I absolutely agree. But there needs to be someone else at the table and they're asking in that process, they're going to present names and then sixty days, the staff is going to come together and bring what they presented. But I was under the impression they wanted to be a part of what was being created with the staff and that's impossible. Am I, is that correct?
Yeah, well, and, and I guess to a certain degree, we, we kind of already are, as Bailey said, we have had some conversations.
And we have, we have the plan. We don't really have to give you, we don't necessarily, you have, they have the copy. So we, we don't necessarily have to be there dictating how the process goes. We have the things that we think would be a good idea. So it's turned over to you to lead it how you.
I meant, what, what my thought is the staff could come back and say, we, we've restructured our internal organization and we've got someone internally that's now going to be dedicated to do this versus whatever else they've been doing. But if the staff may come back to us and say, hey, look, there's a huge gap. There's no way that we can accomplish this if we don't add headcount and personnel, then that's a decision for the board in the budget process. That was my thought process. I mean, Cole, honestly, you, you mentioned Saturday. I, I got this Thursday when I got my agenda package. That was the first time I had seen it. So to sit here tonight and say, yeah. So, to sit here tonight and say, yes, let's go contract a hundred thousand dollars out for somebody for a three to five year period. Again, we're in election season, we're making decisions for another board. I don't think that would be quite fair to do that on somebody else because a new board may get in here and say, we completely disagree. I don't think they would, but we may completely disagree with this and terminate that employee. So, I think that was, that was a fair compromise in my opinion.
Okay, anything else on the side?
Yeah, I mean, I know that we received the, the parts of this, but we received what this process was like last year when we presented. It's the same information, the job description and everything.
All that stuff.
They, we, we were put, the paperwork was put in the email to us, this is the same information.
But I don't think it was the whole board.
Okay.
It was just us.
I thought we all received it.
I think in one way it may have all been sent, but I don't really think everybody was necessarily actively to change.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So, sixty days, you're saying we can revisit this and hopefully some action items will be. I think that's fair. We appreciate you guys listening to us.
Thank you.
You know, at least we recognize that someone's going to need to take breaks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's got item number nine.
Mayor, next item is to conduct a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending section fifteen dash eighty endorsements on major subdivision flats of the land use ordinance. At this time, I'd like to ask Matt Shelley to explain this item.
Good evening, everyone. And contrary to previous, uh, presentations, this is going to be very cut and dry. As you may or may not know, the drawings that come through the Development Services Office, uh, especially for subdivisions at the final flat stage. They include a, it, the drawing itself includes a block of information in one part of the, one of the pages. And that block of information is dictated by the state legislature, uh, with regard to the land surveyors sign up on the sheet certifying that it's an accurate drawing for, uh, for this project. Uh, and they have changed the language and so we are now required to change the language. And that is a text amendment in our zoning code, so, in our land use ordinance, sorry. Uh, and so, that's it, we're required to change it.
Any other staff comments at this time? At this time, on item number nine, I'm going to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting an ordinance amending section fifteen dash eighty endorsements on major subdivision flats of the land use ordinance. Anyone that would like to come forward from the public to make any comments, ask questions, you're more than free to do that at this time.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance amending section fifteen eighty endorsements of major subdivision flats of the land use ordinance.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Harris? Alderman Binkle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number ten.
Mayor, next item is to present, conduct a public hearing and consider a resolution approving the resiliency plan. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come up and start that presentation.
And I'll ask, uh, Don York to also accommodate me, um, or accompany me, sorry. So, this one will be a little bit more interesting, I hope, than just that last one. This is, uh, regarding the resiliency and hazard mitigation plan that the city has been working on for over two years, uh, two and a half years probably at this point. And I'd like to point out that, uh, contrary to maybe many other plans that we have seen and adopted over the years. This plan is expected to be what we would call a living document. It's expected to be revised and amended over the years as we're moving forward. And so, this plan that's being asked to be adopted is just the first iteration, say, of that. That said, however, um, it has been constructed with a great deal of input and cooperation from all the departments in the city. Many of the agencies and organizations and residents of the city as well. There is a thirty megabyte portion of the plan that I hope you maybe didn't all necessarily download.
Eighty-two pages or something?
I'll save it to pages, yeah.
Just on the planning process, which showed all the involvement of the various departments and all the various public, the people, the citizens and the various other organizations. So, we'll start though first with the, uh, the vision statement for the project. And here we talked about, uh, that the purpose of the plan is to implement, by implementing this plan, New Bern's city, its residents, businesses and community stakeholders will prepare for, adapt to and respond to a future of rising tides and extreme storms, embrace equitable and sustainable development, increase economic security, protect public health and promote its cultural heritage. And so, with that, I'll pass this on to Don.
Good evening, uh, Don York, uh, senior planner with Moffett Nickel out of Wilmington. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you and, uh, accommodate, uh, Mr. Shelley here. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes of your time tonight just to walk through at a high level a briefing of the resilience and hazard mitigation plan. First, I just again want to, uh, say thank you to the city of New Bern for taking the proactive steps of addressing the threat of flooding and sea level rise and coastal impacts. I understand from Hurricane Florence twenty eighteen caused devastating impacts. I'm from Wilmington and also felt those same impacts. So, um, I appreciate the effort of working with your city staff and the stakeholders and the communities to undertake this very robust process to develop a citywide resiliency and hazard mitigation plan, um, the first in the state of North Carolina. This plan is meant to increase community resilience to flood hazards, including the effects of climate change. This listed here on this slide are some of the major components that you'll find in the resilience plan, which is posted on the website. It's divided into various sections, each available as a separate document if, uh, so pleased, um, if that'll be a little bit easier to digest for yourself. We also offer introductory subsections for each of those sections to provide a little bit of background information to help navigate the reader. It's also important to note that our team, um, which also included city staff, engineers, um, GIS support, historical experts. We used existing data, existing plans such as your local resilience and hazard mitigation plan, the regional hazard mitigation plan. And we were meant to build upon previous and existing planning efforts. We went, meant to expand, enhance and complete those products in a new way in order to provide detailed information. So, again, you won't find repeated information out of your regional hazard mitigation plan in this document. It's meant to serve as an amendment or an appendix to that regional plan. Again, just to reiterate, the plan is available for public comment and comments can be submitted via email. Again, as Mr. Shelley, uh, mentioned, um, one of the major components of this plan and one of the reasons it did take a little under two years. Again, it did get kicked off, right, as COVID, um, hit eastern, uh, North Carolina. So, it did require our team to engage the public and stakeholders through high burn methods. This project was completed, um, again, stakeholders, public and city staff, support and feedback throughout the process. The core planning team met twelve different times over the course of the project. And of course, as I mentioned, um, providing those, those meetings during the time of COVID. We did create a series of digital communication methods to advertise and relay information to the public. And I do have to say thank you to Colleen for serving as the lead for some of those advertisements, so thank you. Uh, we also conducted three hybrid public meetings, some of those that did occur in this room. And allowed the New Bern committed, community to engage with the team, um, during those public meetings, whether it's be through Facebook Live, Zoom events or, um, opportunities to submit feedback. We also provided two opportunities to submit comments and feedback through online public surveys. Those surveys and all of the, um, respondents, um, information is provided on the website, um, under city of Wilmington, excuse me, city of New Bern resiliency website. Uh, we also held two, uh, virtual workshops with stakeholders to engage, educate and gather input from a group of key diverse stakeholders. As well as provide a crowdsourcing, um, ArcGIS online map to allow stakeholders to provide additional comments. And as you've noticed throughout the plan, um, there is, um, recently a theme of resilience pillars. This was meant to create categories to define and categorize the community's goals and objectives as they relate to community resilience. During the public engagement process, the New Bern community expressed their concerns based on various themes. These themes were listed in order of magnitude based on the community's priorities and preferences. And these pillars became the foundation for the project's resiliency plan. And I'm just going to go very briefly through, uh, these various pillars. The first one is health and safety. Purpose is to reduce public health and human service efforts on the city, enhance community resilience. Housing, we wanted to ensure that we are addressing the vulnerability of existing housing within the city. Develop strategies to strengthen, fortify and mitigate at-risk properties and owners, residents. And also plan for the resilience of future development as you work together to inform those decisions on development in the future. Economy. This is to support, enhance and better understand the resiliency of the city's economy to financial disruptions due to emergency events, stressors and shocks. Infrastructure. Purpose is to protect and improve the resiliency of the city's infrastructure to withstand and recover from natural hazards. As well as provide life safety precautions, protections during extreme measures, extreme hazards. Natural resources, um, we are using nature-based and green infrastructure to work with our partners and stakeholders to become a more resilient city by restoring habitat and protecting our buffers around our wetlands and our rivers. We also want to analyze and implement sustainable solutions to allow the city to become more resilient during those storm events. Cultural heritage, this is to protect New Bern's cultural heritage and historic community character. In my last slide, slide here, it just outlines some of the steps, um, one of which tonight is on our agenda to adopt, uh, the final plan. But I just wanted to note that each of the goals that were identified above for the specific resilience pillars were, are supported by specific activities. Are defined in resilience action list that were developed, um, during workshops with city staff. And based on, uh, identified actions and information that would lead to, um, agency responsibility, cost estimations, timeframes and potential funding sources. Those resiliency actions are sort of the framework for future implementation of the priorities that were laid out under each of the resilience pillars and those goals. The resilience actions identified were rated using a stapling method, uh, which use seven different criteria to evaluate actions. Social, technical, administrative, political, legal, economic and environmental. The members of the core planning team, which are primarily the city staff, including, uh, Mr. Shelley here, the Economic Development, uh, Division will be taking the lead in ensuring that the vision and goals of the resilience plan will be integrated into, uh, future economic opportunities. So, with that, um, I just want to note that the final resilience plan, uh, will be rolled up into the regional hazard mitigation plan as an amendment. So that when there are future declared disasters, you, the city will be, excuse, city of New Bern, uh, will be prepared, um, for when those disasters hit. You will have priority actions that have been identified, uh, by the city and funding can be made available given the final resilience plan adoption and the regional hazard mitigation plan. So, with that, I'd love to open it up for any questions.
Okay, I'm going to, if the board has any questions, comments.
I have a couple, um, I see one of the last statements you hear, all comments to be included to the record for future updates. So, comments that are made here today, let's say someone's not here today and still wanted to make the comment. Those comments would be received and put into the plan for, as, as we grow the plan, because it says it's a living document. So, we will continue to look at it, update, processes change, whatever. So, there's still, input would still be allowed.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure we are reaching all our citizens and that we can continue, we can take this document, even though we adopt it tonight and then still roll it out and get the input from citizens throughout our affected neighborhoods, mostly in my ward and Alderman's Best Ward. And I think it's important that all those neighborhoods, and, you know, if you could, if there's a way to make a, um, executive summary, because it is really difficult. Most people are not going to read the eighty-eight pages.
I understand, there is an executive summary.
There is an executive summary.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are reaching the most people we can reach. And I want to thank the CARES group and others who have really, um, been the driving force behind this. And, um, I, I do see your emails, Larry, so, um, I, I appreciate all the work. I just want to make sure we're not leaving out any comments or any additions to this that may be necessary.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, once, uh, once we approve this, does that then put us in a position to go after the break funding through FEMA?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, there, we're already, we, city of New Bern is already in a position. We actually had a recent conversation with North Carolina Emergency Management, um, Chris Crew, who has, um, I do have to say that he had, um, without us giving him any, um, input actually, you know, made a comment about the city of New Bern's proactive approach. And that he has received and sees that there's three work applications that have been submitted for various priority projects to support, uh, flood risk reduction in, in the community to help support resiliency. However, he also noted that by having the rolled up resilience plan as part of the regional plan, that gives you a, a better alignment when those FEMA funding becomes available. It just puts you, that's that further step ahead.
Better scoring, right?
Absolutely.
And is that a, is that a grant process? Is that how that works? So, are we handling that internally with your department set?
Well, yes, and we're also using consultants to help us get through a lot of the, the heavy lifting on us.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Best?
Did I hear, uh, young lady, did I hear you say that the city of New Bern was the first plan within the state?
It's the first resiliency and hazard mitigation plan combined effort. That has taken these, this type of process and these types of steps. So, there is a similar process that's being done under the Division of Coastal Management, um, on a much smaller scale. Called a, I can provide you with more information about that, but the city of New Bern has already stepped much farther ahead of, of that program. And so, yes, and, you know, just Matt can reiterate our conversation with the North Carolina Emergency Management that they would like to, uh, look to the city of New Bern as a model to demonstrate to other communities how the process was done. And I, and it really does come down to that community engagement process. Because some of the, uh, typical hazard mitigation and planning effort does have a community engagement process, but not to be extended from down in this.
So, another question, um, once this plan is rolled over into the regional plan, so would that put the city of New Bern in a position to where we could actually maybe apply for some of the ARP money, funding through? For, for this particular project?
What was the?
ARP, the American Rescue Act plan? Through grants?
I think that is something that's a potential, I'm not as familiar with it. I'm not as familiar with it.
I'm not sure if it is connected, if they're connected at all, because I'm not familiar with what the ARP funding requirements are.
I think there's a separate funding that's coming out for resilience.
This is the separate.
But this does provide us with a series of projects that could line up for any one of those sets of funds.
Okay. No, I just wanted to appreciate Alderman for pointing out that after we adopt that, comments are still going to, it's a living document, so there's not an end date for when someone can comment on this, correct?
Absolutely.
That's correct.
And we, Colleen has already been putting out on social media how they can, okay, I just want to follow up.
Yes, and I wanted to add to that, I mean, it's, I guess, it may be important to add them to the document, but it's actually more important that we actually listen, read them, listen, and incorporate them into some of the projects that are coming forward, or maybe even create new projects from those comments.
Thank you, I appreciate that comment.
How does the community rating, rating for the City of New Bern improve based on the study?
Are you talking, are you talking about the community rating system for flooding?
Yes, obviously, adopting this should positively affect our rating.
Yes. I'm going to guess, educated guess here, the, because this plan is so new in terms of its kind of comprehensiveness, I don't think the community rating system has any extra points for that yet. However, there may be a category that is related to kind of general improvements in the plan.
Somewhere there, it does, it does talk about community ratings, so it didn't go any detail, that's why I was asking. Okay, anybody else before we have the public hearing? Let's go ahead and open a public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public would like to come forward and ask any questions associated with the resiliency plan? Please come forward and just state your name and address for the record, and then we'd love to hear your comments.
Hi, good evening. So I just want to say, you know, in my world, the best prevention, we don't know what the word is going to be, you know, so, is karma. And sometimes the best thing to do is just say thank you to the city for all the planning, especially the emergency services, for getting all the 400 people out that night. Many, many things had happened, and especially the follow-up from this board to collect the FEMA money so that the city could be rebuilt. And even more especially, you know, sometimes, I was spending some time down here because I had to stay on my boat when they finished my home repairs, and I was constantly running into people from all over the country who came to help. And maybe we could pay that forward somehow and just remember them. So thank you very much, and that's all I have to say, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Larry Rosenstrout, I live in 514 East Front Street in New Bern. I want to thank the board for undertaking this process to deliver a plan for the community and let us review it. I do want to ask you to do something, but I want to set the stage for that briefly. I'm here representing both the CARE organization, CARE is Citizens Advocating Resiliency, and Education for Resiliency. We are an informal, somewhat loose, and an out-of-organization of 15 to 35 people representing the neighborhoods that were affected by Hurricane Florence. It's formed by Nelson McDaniel, who is sitting behind me. And that organization, like the document, will be a living organization. We'll be here to kind of track what's going on and try to work with you on behalf of the community, but with other organizations that are formal, that are out there that really have responsibilities. We have advocated two things, I want to mention them briefly to you, but not one. One is the plan. Thank you very much for finding the money. It was a lot of work. You hired excellent consultants, and we are pleased to have what we think is a good beginning. As someone who has tried to scan all 803 pages, it really is a lot to digest, but the first 151 will get you pretty far. The second thing we are advocating and have been before you before is to advocate that you have, or find, if you don't want to create a position, a senior official at the city, a report to the city manager, who will oversee and lead resiliency efforts. Resilience is a citywide issue. It is at the level of public safety, of health, you've heard of economic development across all departments, you could easily have a deputy city manager working on that. If not, my request to you is think about how to get leadership at a high level to look at this, and that will help you also attract money. And you will also find, if you do hire someone, you will find that they build, they come with strategic planning skills, already knowing about resiliency, and will place us in a position of being able to respond better to our annual risk. This is not a long-term issue. Annually, we face, we roll the dice. So I want to emphasize to you, we hope you will think about how to implement this plan and find that leadership. I'm now going to speak for myself and not for CARE, but several other people asked me to at least mention their names who would associate themselves with my brief comments. Maria Chofer and Cotton, are two that I've heard directly from today. And the reason I want to say that is, we've not had time to fully digest the plan, and that's what I'm asking you to do. Please adopt this plan, but don't adopt it tonight. Give the community time to digest it, give yourselves time to read it. And if you need a reason to do that, ask yourself, what is the impact of the vulnerability in Chapter 7, which Donna didn't have a chance to go over? But it's in your first chart, if you would ever, when you look at the table. Ask yourself, how significant does this plan touch? More than 80% of the sales volume of New Bern's business are vulnerable to major threats from flooding, from storm surge. More than, almost 70%, 69% of the tax base, of the improved tax base, you are not dealing with a trivial, small plan. Let the Chamber of Commerce, let the business community have a chance to digest this and digest the actions you are recommending to address that, that will affect the life of this community for a long time to come. Mother Nature is not happy with us as a plan, she's coming back, we need to be prepared, we are thankful that you're going to do this, we want you to adopt the plan. But my suggestion to you is go slow to go fast. If you go fast, you may well hit a brick wall of distrust and resentment. When people read a plan, they've had no chance to give you feedback on the plan, they gave you input to it. Give them a little breathing room, give yourselves that time, please. So my request to you is revise your, revise your item to say we would receive the report, direct staff to get that out to the public for additional comment and feedback, and give yourselves 60 to 90 days, and then adopt it, and in summer, when we can all come here and cheer for the adoption of that plan. If you don't wish to do that, we should adopt it tonight and approve it. Then schedule its first revision by early, early in the next year, so people's comments that Alderman and Vingle mentioned are received, we can digest it, and we are back here in early next year saying, let's see, and we'll give you our feedback that way. But you have a couple of ways to handle this. Thank you for your attention. We appreciate what you're doing to make New Bern a resilient community.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward and ask questions, make comments about this? I have, yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Wood, yes, line 1316 National Avenue in Riverside. This is quite the ambitious plan, and I should be commended for instigating it. You may notice from my accent that I'm not originally from New Bern. I came here with my wife the end of August 2018, and we immediately retreated to Richmond because we came from New Jersey and experienced enough storms up there that we wanted to get out of there, and ended up in the middle of Florence, and watched on national TV as the floodwaters came over Union Park and the rest of our new town. I do have a question for the consultants, though, but I read through quickly the plan. I didn't see anything about, and I don't know, I'm not an expert, the watershed for the Neuse River, if my memory is correct, I've seen a sign almost as far out as I-95, saying that the watershed for the Neuse River extends way out there. And if this is an initial plan by our town, how will we be affected, or how do we respond to surges that are coming down the river to our community from the watershed, the Neuse River watershed? Is this a question?
It's a great question.
Thank you. The plan is quite ambitious, and I hope we can implement it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff.
In addition to this plan, several mayors, county managers are working on a resiliency plan for eastern North Carolina, kind of a mutual aid, just like our electric department, our public works. We're trying to receive funding. We actually have a meeting in Goldsboro, Foster, what was that, about a month ago?
Couple months ago.
Senator Jim Perry was there, and we are in lockstep with the General Assembly, making them aware that we want to be prepared. We're looking for probably a regional, a regional flood czar of sorts to, again, for mutual aid purposes, and for, again, New Bern is way out front. This first started with a visit to the Collider Group in Asheville, Mark Stevens and myself, and then Mr. Stevens came back and started this discussion, Margaret Shields, I was able to work and help us with grant funding, and so this is part of the process. I think that somewhat, Larry.
Mayor, we're still in public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm just trying to bring up a couple of comments, so that if anybody else, if I stir any other comments or concerns from the public, you might want to come up and talk a little bit, so I'm trying to help answer. You were asked a question, I just wanted to bring you up if you were aware of some of those things or not.
The only thing I can say to the gentleman's question about the Neuse River Basin as a whole is, you know, we were very focused on the City of New Bern, focused on municipal boundaries, so the tool, the Risk and Vulnerability Assessment Tool that was developed, evaluating coastal hazards, as well as the critical assets that were identified for the community, is focused on New Bern and the watersheds within the city boundaries. However, I would like to note that the Corps of Engineers is conducting a Neuse River Basin feasibility study that Amanda Olin-Salen and other staff from Development Services has been a part of, and we have been in recent contact with them to determine what the progress and statuses of the Neuse River Basin study. So we want to be sure that they are fully aware of this resilience plan, and to perhaps help encourage them to identify potential actions that the Corps of Engineers can take on the federal side to support resiliency in New Bern.
Another piece that was included in the plan, or at least the plan process, was a discussion about pretty much, a lot similar to what you were just describing, and that is to reach out to surrounding communities and upstream communities and counties and organizations that are all upstream to work together to figure out some solutions for everybody, because even the upstream people have people upstream of them, so.
I don't know, again, I want to, I don't want to get ahead of myself, we are still in a public hearing, but to kind of help the public, maybe have a question or two. In reading the report, unless I missed it, particularly like the school system, a lot of information's in there. The county, I don't remember, I think they were budgeting funding for maybe six generators for schools, and I think they applied for some grant funding and maybe got three or four of them. They obviously can't get them county-wide. I think the idea was, particularly with some schools, that were having issues with moisture, high levels of humidity, et cetera, for long periods of time, having generators. Alderman Parrish, you well remember that, of all things, during Florence, we were trying to find somewhere an 18 we were put unload.
Yeah.
And we finally wound up with a ramp.
Old River Center. Where they did, after Old River Center?
Yeah. So, you know, some of these things like getting resources into New Bern, there's just, I'm limited evidently in what the scope of this report was and is versus some, there is in this report, I do recall, I think you commented right much on the communication or lack thereof, and how to approve on that. But there was quite a few items that have happened that the county's been working on that obviously affect the city, and I didn't see anything in here unless I missed it.
As far as?
Generators, roads closed down as far as getting back to the regional plan. Tony McElwen with the City of Assistant Manager, Public Relations for the City of Wilmington, pretty much is, it's pretty much governing, managing that for the area mayors. So Wilmington's kind of taking the lead, along with Pender County, City of New Bern, and other cities.
Kinston? Is Kinston there as well?
Yeah, I mean, Bayard-Hartley, Shaw, all those guys, yeah.
Yeah, and I honestly, for the resilience, the action worksheets and projects that were identified, again, they were done really with workshops with the city staff. Stakeholder workshops that were held earlier on in the process included county officials. However, I think with the resilience action worksheets, there's a lot of future efforts that can be done to scope out additional.
Well, Francis, again, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the big things in New Bern right now was the idea of the Santa White being a Red Cross center. And again, one thing that we were seriously lacking was available housing in the right location for our citizens. And again, back to the generators, and back to the logistics and transportation. Alderman, Odom and I, we stayed in the Duffy Field area until it was about coming, our floor was getting people out. So partnership with the National Guard on the spot, when this doesn't happen in New Bern, and it happens in Kinston or Snow Hill or Grange, the City of New Bern expeditiously partnering with those other cities, sister cities that are impacted, but we aren't. I didn't see that reciprocity in plan of action. So Larry, there are things that, again, I don't know if they're within the scope of this resiliency plan or not. I'm just glad we have one, we didn't have one. It is a first step. Whether or not our inspections department is going to get the direction from the Board of Alderman to encourage use of more resilient materials and hire free boards, et cetera. So again, I'm kind of getting, I think I'm where I should be when we get out of public hearing, but these are some things that the public has in comments that you would like to, or questions you would have, please come up and do it. This is a very important item, and you know, it really took, I mean, I read that thing from time we got it, and you know, I'm not going to tell you I have all 100, 100% of this in my brain here. So if you have any questions, please come up and ask me, because you're going to be helping me to understand this, because obviously something of that size, something's left out, and we want to, we want to make sure we're totally comprehensive, ready for the next event.
Absolutely.
Anybody from the public?
Mayor.
We are here because of the public, right much, because the public helped us to get motivated to start this process through Margaret, Larry, and others, CARE, the group, et cetera. Go ahead.
No, I was, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion to say to close the public hearing is their discussion. Seeing none, on favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we're back to the board discussion.
Well, I definitely agree with the things that you're saying, because what you're saying about trying to get the transportation in when the roads was closed, I appreciate all of the staff and, you know, this work. I know Jeff and Amanda are no longer with us, they had a big part in this too, and again, whoever hasn't been here for, you know, public hearing, you see it on. And again, whoever hasn't been here for, you know, public hearing, you see it on TV, you see on Facebook, please make sure you give your comments because like the mayor said, it is, it is a lot of information to digest and there is things that could be missing from it that we need, you know, an extra set of eyes to see because, you know, we want to be prepared if we ever have to experience, God forbid.
Yes.
You know, we don't ever want to experience what we did in Hurricane Florence, but at least we will be prepared when that does happen. So I appreciate all the hard work that has been put in place and I'm looking forward to seeing it in action.
So.
She was, she was.
Well, I have a question. So can you talk to me a little bit about if we did delay the adoption of this, does it hurt any of the potential funding that's already out there? I've heard what Larry has to say and I, again, I want to reiterate about it's important to have as many comments as we can to make sure the documents is prepared, but I don't want to jeopardize any money either because we could start maybe implementing some of those as long as we can continue to get comments and get the show on the road, really.
Well, that's correct. Actually, yes, that is an issue. The adoption does finalize some of our funding for the project and also pushing it back farther does potentially cause problems with rolling it into the regional hazard mitigation plan and the funding for that process as well. And then the other concern above and beyond just the funding and finances are that it will be much better to have the plan already rolled into the regional plan before our summer storm season arrives because that plan is a FEMA, an official FEMA plan. And once, once you have this document in that official FEMA plan, that's where we actually score the extra points for funding should we need it for recovery. But of course, this plan is not just about recovery, it's also about preparation too. So obviously, we can't, we are not going to be entirely prepared for any storm season this year as a result of this plan, but it will get us started to get prepared for it sooner than later.
One other question I had was that, is there someone near your department or how can we get this document to the chamber, to Swiss Bay, to the other organizations so that the comments can continue to come in and they understand what's in the plan?
Yes. It was actually quite kind of ironic after coming back from lunch today to see the suggestion by the CARES group because during lunch I had realized that we need to take this plan on the road, so to say, and take it out to all the various organizations and start rolling this out so that people can indeed understand what's in it and also to continue to get the input, especially once they understand what's in it, you know, also what's not in it, right? Well, what about this idea about six more generators or something like that? So those are the things that start to get added back in that we're talking about.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. You basically hit on what I was going to ask him. So once, once this plan is, if we approve this plan tonight and it's rolled into the regional plan, will there be any room there left for revisions?
Oh, yes. Yes.
As far as the, the money end of this, if we come back sixty days now, want to add to this, does the general fund pay to update this, does another grant, what's the funding source for updating this?
Yes. So we actually have, the city already has on, essentially on retainer, on call, a resiliency consultant who's on call to do a whole range of functions related to the resiliency plan implementation.
And is that person the same?
No.
So, does that violate or breach the etiquette of this resiliency plan that another consultant or whatever is?
No, so you might think that's actually, I guess, an ethical improvement in the sense that the people who wrote the plan aren't the ones that are now going to, you know, be signed on.
Is that correct? Is that in your experience?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, certainly Mocha Nickel would love to continue working with the city of New Bern as long as you need us, but I think that the resiliency consultant selected is an absolutely good.
Well, let me ask you this, and I'm not trying to get too critical, but did you interview any of these Alderman to do this or did you think our input might be important?
I was on a couple of the meetings and calls I participated.
I believe that the city provided a stakeholder list and all of the public officials were part of that list.
I think we got a form too. Wasn't there a questionnaire? I'm trying to remember. I believe we got a question. Yeah, we got a questionnaire that we had to fill out.
Well, again, I'm just kind of trying to figure out some of these, I'm telling you, in New Bern, North Carolina, you know, our school systems, it was horrendous. I mean, if you think zooming and masks is no problem, y'all been here trying to figure out how to get these, they kept doing the testing, Bob, you know about that and Bob, you know about that. We just had masks down here and one of the worst things was, you know, everybody can do GPS and if you're in Raleigh with a load of goods to bring down here, but everybody was getting directly around Griffin, you could go through Pollock's Bill, you could go through Kinston. So we were spinning all this time, everybody's got GPS, but who cared if they had GPS if the bridges are flooded? So I mean, that kind of stuff, it just, I don't know if I'm not reading the report right, but I just think there's a lot of additional information in there as far as.
That's right. You know, there's probably 10,000 ideas and good suggestions that could have been added into this plan, but one, we didn't get 10,000, but we could over the course of the next few months, years, especially as situations arise and people realize something happened the last time that we should maybe fix this time.
Mr. Mayor, there's, there's a lot of information here tonight that's really beyond the scope of this resilience plan. We're talking about generators, bringing in tractor trailer trucks, you know, and stuff to that nature is all in the city of New Bern's emergency operation plan.
True.
There is, and if you want to know the truth, the county is totally responsible for requesting that type of information.
Okay.
Or equipment. The city usually has a liaison, which I think is named into the EOP, as to who would be at the county operations center, typically a member of the fire service. You know, if a, if a city employee is out and needs a generator somewhere, you know, that request goes to the IC, the IC turns it over to the liaison, liaison turns it over to the county and the county requests it from the state. City of New Bern cannot request anything from the state of North Carolina from, during a disaster. It all has to come through Stanley Kite's office and he does, he does a great job. Most of the things that we and the state learned this as well, that Hurricane Florence especially was widespread, so there was a tremendous amount of requests coming in for resources. I think the state has repaired that problem and I think they're in a lot better shape today than what they were during Hurricane Florence. But stuff like, if you got a tractor trailer truck comes in and needs to be unloaded, that's, that goes, should go to the county emergency manager's office.
Yeah, well, I just.
And they make arrangements for it, get him in here, get a forklift, get him unloaded. They had warehouses full of, of resources during Florence.
Easier said than done.
And I admitted that there was some issues, you know, but I think a lot of that's been changed, but.
Well, I guess, I guess so.
It's also a timing issue. That was one of my biggest complaints.
I guess, I guess you're bringing up something, you know, the divide between, you know, what Stanley Kite County and, and does versus what the resiliency plan does. I mean, when I, when I think of resiliency, I think of elevations and materials and storm surges and scouring and all those things. And so, yeah, they probably are not generators, but when that, when it hits.
Yeah.
You worry, you're not worried about materials, you're worried about life and, and safety and getting kids back in school and so.
Trying to find alternate routes. Sometimes GPS systems are updated, so I definitely understand where it comes from there.
Okay, but again, back, so if we add to this, would that be volume two or would it be, it obviously cannot be an amendment to this because you're going to get a different consultant somewhere.
No, so, right, well, no, it can still be an amendment by the same, by a different consultant. It's our document, it's not theirs.
And you recommend that we adopt this tonight because of.
Yes, yes, yes.
But any, if Nelson finally got a chance to sit down and read it and see something
that needs to be added, he just, he contacts your office?
Well, yes.
And you take those suggestions?
Yep, and we have the, we still have the online comment option as well, so people can just pull it up off the resiliency page and make comments that way.
Okay.
I think it's important to do the dog, I hate to call it the dog and pony show and carry it.
Right, exactly.
To Rotary Clubs and things like that, neighborhoods. I think the Duffy Field Residence Council would like to see maybe a presentation done there.
For the community.
Yes, and just they can understand by bringing it down to like an executive summary like you did tonight and understand that, so if they do have questions, they can ask and it just, it gets out there. I just think we need to carry it to different places.
I think it'd be great too, I knew you already said it, I didn't see it into a form that, form where it can be sent out to like the HOAs and things of that nature too.
Right. But all, you know, all neighborhood, all neighborhoods that have community groups, you know, high drum show would see it and you're saying.
It just needs to get out to the public.
And I'd like to, I'd like to suggest maybe coming back in September, for us to come back to you guys in September and give you a report as to where we've been, what we've done, what's come up, what's, what's new, what's changed.
Perfect.
Yeah, I guess I kind of got out of line a little bit with that. It's because, I mean, like I just, I made a note here, page five dash third, Water Resources Department. I mean, there's, there's so many different functions of government and, and groups in New Bern. I thought if you interviewed them, I was just trying to figure out why some of those things I mentioned were not as important. I mean, there's, there's reference in here to several groups, I think HR is actually in there and, and it always seems to boil down to recommendations or positive things can be done, negative things or whatever, and I couldn't quite follow that. That's the first one I've ever read, so maybe I'm just not familiar with reading one of these things.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the resiliency plan.
Second. Okay, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you everybody for their hard work on this.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Mayor, before you move forward, can you please have a ten minute recess?
Yes. Just go ahead and make a motion.
I make a motion, we have a ten minute recess.
Second.
Second, motion, second is their discussion. Seeing none, on favor of the motion, say aye. All proof say we're, a recess here now. We're going to go ahead and resume, if you would. Mr. Hughes, if you would, go to item number eleven.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat for Humanity of Craven County, Christine Cox and the city of New Bern for 1904 Wake Street. On September 24th, 2019, the city approved the conveyance of this property to Habitat for Humanity for the purpose of developing affordable housing for low and moderate income families. Habitat subsequently constructed a home on the property and intends to transfer the home to a buyer. By executing the deed to transfer ownership to the buyer, the city will release any rights retained in a transfer and reversion agreement between the city and Habitat.
Okay.
After the discussion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a general warranty deed between Habitat, Humanity of Craven County, North Carolina, Christina Cox and the city of New Bern for 1904 Wake Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twelve.
Next item is consider an amendment to the capital project ordinance to rename the city hall annex building project fund as the city hall elevator project fund. So in May of 2019, an ordinance was adopted to establish a capital project fund for the design and construction of the elevator at city hall. In 2020, that project fund was renamed to better reflect, at that time, the board was looking at adding an annex. Now the board is looking at basically the elevator and restroom, so, so the goal is to basically rename that what the project actually is.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an amendment to the capital project ordinance to rename the city hall annex building project fund as the city hall elevator project fund.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number thirteen.
Next item is consider a resolution authorizing filing of an application with the local government commission for the city hall elevator project. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to come forward.
So I would like to, or because we are financing for the city hall project, which involves several properties, we need to apply through the LGC and so I'm asking that you approve, authorize the filing of the application with the LGC to move forward with the possible borrowing of the city hall elevator project.
Yeah, I guess, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is it, it's going to be for 2.86% or 3.86%? I saw 3.86% and I think it was item number fifteen.
So.
The financing.
I reached out and got a more formal quote and I reached out to four banks and so for 15 years, it is 2.86, for 20 years, it's 3.13%.
Okay.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the local government commission for the city hall elevator project.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number fourteen.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the city hall elevator project. Ms. Ostrom?
So it's just certified by the IRS regulations, a declaration of intent to reimburse needs to be adopted prior to or within sixty days of payment of expenditures, they'll be reimbursed through financing proceeds. So I ask that you approve, adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse for the city hall elevator project.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the city hall elevator project.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number sixteen.
Next item is consider a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Daniels and Daniels Construction Company for the city hall elevator project. Bids for the city hall elevator project were received on February 24th, 2022 and the bids resulted, bids were presented to the board on March 8th. The proposed resolution authorizes the manager to execute a contract with the lowest bidder, Daniels and Daniels Construction, for $3,929,000 and any change orders within the budgeted amount.
Trip, was there a contingency in that amount? Do you know?
There is not a contingency in the Daniels and Daniels. and, uh, we would recommend that you have Foster, uh, do that on your behalf within the funds that are, have been, uh, established for that purpose. Thank you.
Are you good with that? Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Well, the only thing, um, I will make sure is as our architect, you well know that change orders will eat you alive. So are you, are you anticipating a lot of change orders in this project?
We are not because the annex itself is essentially, uh, new construction. Uh, there are some, uh, potential issues where it comes to making connection to the historic City Hall and, and the work and the removing the restrooms. Uh, but we don't foresee anything that, that would be, uh, an extraordinary expenditure.
Well, when you say it's any change orders within the budgeted amount, means they can't exceed the budgeted amount, correct?
Well, I'm afraid we're confusing the difference between the, the contract award to Daniels and Daniels, which is the entirety of the contract amount they would be paid versus the budget that has been set up for the project, which includes not only the contractor's board, but a contingency of funds that you hold outside of those monies. If, if that makes any sense. In other words, there is no, I want to make sure you understand, there are no contingency monies within the nine million, I mean, the $3,929,000 amount.
And if they find something cheaper along the way, that, that wood comes down or something like that, do they adjust the price? I'm just asking.
It, it is possible, but highly unlikely.
About as much as they'll, um, go up on price when it's locked in, if the price goes up, which is more likely.
But however, I can assure you, um, many times there are, are alternatives offered as to something that we've asked for. And when an alternative is offered, many times it's in good faith. In other words, it may be a better solution of the problem. But sometimes it's, it's a cost issue and we're not shy about asking for a credit when it's warranted.
So when you have a detailed set of plans and specifications, more particularly specifications in it, cost for closed sale, installation, and it's, it's blown in, you know, there's going to be a differential there. Uh, is somebody overseeing so that in a project when a, a deviation from the original plan that was a less favorable product, are you, are we going to get adjustments and all that? Who's going to be watching that? You?
I, I'm your man.
Okay, good.
To the mayor's point, if we're locking in at the 3.9, if it, by the time it is or during the process, things go up, they can't come back to us for more money, correct? Or is that what the contingency is?
Well, a contractor can always make a claim. Now whether that claim is warranted or not.
Okay.
Yeah, there's always the possibility when you get into these things that there may be a cost you don't anticipate. However, I, I feel confident that the budget that we've outlined for you for the contingency is sufficient to, to take care of any such unforeseen. So, so maybe what might help is this is their number to do the project. They can't get in there and say, oh, well, aluminum went up and I'm going to ask for more money.
Right.
They could say, instead of aluminum, we need to go with a different product and it costs more, but here's the reasons why. That would be a change order, but they just can't arbitrarily raise the price.
Okay, I want to make sure. Thank you.
They can't do it. I mean, they, they do it sometimes. So you gotta watch and make sure we-
We watch closely and, and to give you some comfort, uh, we go through a, a paperwork submittal process and, and sometimes those questions come up at that point. But more, most often we've provided for you within documents, uh, what is needed for this particular project. And so the instances of a, uh, an approved deviation, as the, the mayor was suggesting, uh, it would be for something relatively minor and, um, uh, uh, of, of something that is not, uh, a major component of the building. You know, in other words, we've gone to the HPC, they've approved a, a great deal of, of what we've included in the project. And, uh, this architect doesn't want to change any of that because he doesn't want to have to go back and go through that approval process.
Jod, jod my memory again. Once this is finalized and we go through the process, when do we get into action for the elevator?
Two weeks.
So I, I think the best way for me to answer that question is, um, uh, we, we've been proactive and we're meeting with the contractors' representatives today, um, preparing them for the paperwork. Uh, we've talked about, uh, the need to initiate work as soon as possible. Um, one of the things that, uh, oftentimes provide, uh, creates a delay at this point in the project is procuring bonds and insurance. And so today we were having the conversation to put them on notice that, um, that they needed to go ahead and make those arrangements. Um, we believe we'll be able to have a contract to, uh, the city manager in about two weeks, so it can be signed. Uh, we will then hold a pre-construction conference roughly within a week thereafter. And then, uh, 360 days are allowed to complete the, the contract work.
Okay, and this question is for you, Mr. Foster. I'm pretty sure maybe we or the new board, um, may be impacted. Will we need to relocate for meetings or anything so that it's not a, a conflict for any members or of the community coming in, like have to move due to the-
At this time, I don't anticipate that. Now, we will have to relocate some staff in, in certain offices, uh, during some of the, anticipate any, any disruption in this bill, in this room.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
One other, one other comment that I want to make. Um, it's probably, and mayor, you can help me, 35 or 40 years ago, the board sat-
One minute.
Sat in this room and debated an elevator to go right behind the mayor's head. It was going to go right up that, that area there. And I think it was a little over a million, but million dollars and debated and decided not to do it. And, um, unfortunately, you know, we're having to pay probably more money than we ever dreamed we would have to pay. But, um, at the end of the day, um, I want to see Brandon Hill's face because he wants to be in this building so bad and can't get into it. I want to see Ms. Sampson able to not strain herself trying to get in this building and anybody else who has a disability, handicapped, or just doesn't feel like walking up steps. So, um, I know we have bit the bullet and I just want to thank this board. I want to thank Trip and everybody who's been involved in the process because, um, this is a win for our community to be able to access the people's building. So I'm, I'm really proud to be able to sit here tonight and, um, get this job, job done. The second thing I just want to mention, and I, I surely want your input, um, you know that it's going to go on the side where our flagpoles reside right now and, and Bear and the Grafton Reed resides. So the thought process, I, I had talked to Matt about this. He asked me what I thought and I just want to run this by the board, is to move the bear and to the point where the bear is downstairs. So right there, put him there. I don't know, I thought about it. They asked me about the flagpoles. Can the flagpoles go right there? If not, they'd have to go in that grassy, that grassy area, you know, where the house used to be. So when you come in the parking lot to the right. So I just want, and the bear would be moved over to there. So I want everybody to be on the same page. And is everybody good with that or any other suggestions, comments?
This is going to affect more of the whole, if the bear comes down?
No.
Yeah, absolutely. Great. It won't affect anything with the, the usage.
So the bear is moving?
The bear would go over to that green grassy area over there.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe, maybe they'll be moved back once the building is built. I'm not sure of the spacing there, but, um, I know-
We've got a lot of time to worry about that.
Yeah, the bear, the bear is going to have to move, so keep in mind.
I'll make sure the bear is okay.
Have you ever worked with Daniels and Daniels before?
We have.
Good.
A reputable contractor, the other Goldsboro.
Great.
Well, with that being said, mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Daniels and Daniels Construction Company for the City Hall Elevator Project. Thank you, Laura.
Bobby's got your second.
Okay, so, um, any discussion? Uh, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, any discussion? Uh, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time. We'll, we'll keep you posted as, uh, things progress.
Well, we'll tell Ethel because, um, you know, when we told her what she said.
Yeah, yeah.
She wanted to make sure it was-
Yeah, she wanted to be the first person to ride in the car.
Oh, that's going to be beautiful.
So the, the year of the elevator turned into the elevator of the decade? Is that what?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
It's like wine. It takes a while.
Thanks, Trip.
Thank you, dear. Thank you.
Um, let's get item number sixteen.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a grant agreement with the North Carolina Land and Water Fund for an innovative stormwater project. Mr. Shelley, if you'd like to come up?
Good evening, Ian. Uh, this one is actually a, a document that you've already approved before. Um, it needed a change in the signature and in the lap, in the time period that has elapsed. And we also have a new city manager, so that needed to be changed as well. And in the process, they also changed the expiration date to give us time due to the loss of time that they created. So, um, essentially just a simple redo.
Is number, um, six, uh, seventeen, the same information as well, needing to change?
I'm sorry.
Or we could do it-
It, it is a different grant.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a grant agreement with the NC Land and Water Fund for an innovative stormwater project.
Second.
Motion seconds, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number seventeen.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a grant agreement with the North Carolina Land and Water Fund for restoration of degraded streams. Mr. Shelley?
Yes, so the previous one was, uh, a year earlier, first of all. And second of all, that was actually for the, um, Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement Project. Uh, the big dig out there where they have the, um, detention basin. And then also there will be the, um, naturalized, uh, I'm sorry, the, um, constructed wetlands. Uh, this one is, uh, now a new one, uh, from the same people, but this time for, um, the area along the, uh, canal, the Duffy Field Canal and involves, um, uh, naturalizing, using natural, uh, green infrastructure, natural, um, um, methods, uh, to improve drainage throughout that entire area.
Yeah. Absolutely.
And it's, uh, there's no match involved with this, so it's basically for free money. This is to actually do the, the design work, the planning and design work at the front, on front end stuff.
We love free money.
Yes. If there's no questions, mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a grant agreement with the NC Land and Water Fund for restoration of degraded streams. Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Uh, seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number eighteen.
Next item is consider an ordinance to amend the Drainage Improvements Project Fund. This fund will be amended to recognize a $150,000 grant award from the North Carolina, North Carolina Land and Water Fund from a previous item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Any discussion? That we adopt an ordinance to amend the Drainage Improvement Project Fund?
Second.
Motion and second is their discussions. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries item number nineteen.
Next item is consider a resolution approving a program income policy for expenditures relating to the American Rescue Plan Act and coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Ms. Ostrom, if you'd come up and make that presentation.
So, um, during our ARPA presentation that we did, uh, just over a month or two ago, um, we talked about some of the policies that need to be adopted for, um, use of the ARPA funds. And this is, um, one of them, this one and the next one are required policies that we have to have in place. So this one is the program income policy. Any income that's earned, um, from the, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds or the ARPA funds, um, we would have, we have to file, comply with federal guidelines and that outlines that in this policy. We then would turn around and we have to put together some procedures as well if that ends up becoming an issue for us.
Can we approve nineteen and twenty together? Well, mayor, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt resolution approving a program income policy for expenditures related to the ARP and coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, as well as allowable cost and cost principles policy for expenditures related to American Rescue Plan Act and coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Second.
Okay, motion second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twenty-one.
Next item is consider an ordinance to establish the Southeast Water System Improvements Project Fund. I'd like to ask Mr. Hughes come up to talk about this project.
May I remember the board real briefly? I'll give you, uh, the, the background. We have a water booster pump station that sits on the corner of Williams Road and, and Airport, the back entrance to the airport. Uh, we had a contractor doing some work on that this past fall to the exterior of the facility. Unfortunately, had a mishap, a fire started and the fire destroyed the structure. Uh, we've been working with insurance carrier from the contractor for the past several months and it finally reached a settlement on what the replacement cost of that would be and received those proceeds into the city about, about a month ago. So what we need to do now is establish a project fund in order to put those proceeds into. As part of evaluating the replacement option for the booster pump station, we did an alternatives analysis and determined that actually replacing the station in its current location wasn't the best use of the funds as far as a, a replacement. Uh, there's a replacement option and, and when we looked at firefighting capabilities and domestic supply, we came up with a couple other options that were more beneficial to our existing customer base as well as the growing community. Uh, and ultimately we came, we developed a project which we're titled the Southeast Water Improvements Project that will simply create a loop where we have two dead end water veins now. One that works its way down Wilcox Road and dead ends at our elevator tour chain. The other one goes down on Airport Road and dead ends at the Bluewood Rise Development. So we're going So, we're going to basically create a connection point between those two dead ends that will increase our domestic capabilities, as well as our firefighting capabilities in those areas. And what we'll do, we've got that project designed, it's going out for permitting now. Uh, probably the next sixty, seventy-five days, we'll have a chance to get that project out for bid. And once we know the, the construction costs, we'll come back to you with a plan for funding the remaining portion of the construction, if we need more money in this project fund, as well as a schedule for moving forward.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to establish the Southeast Water System Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? C and I must have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Almond?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Motion carries item number twenty-two.
Next item is consider a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two. I'd like to ask Ms. Ostrom to come up.
Hey, so this budget ordinance will amend the general fund by appropriating eighteen thousand five eighty-four from the fund balance to human resources to cover temporary, um, health services associated with the handling of COVID-related matters. The replacement of the department's HVAC system is needed as well, and, um, document storage fees. Um, an additional forty-three thousand five hundred thirty-eight will be appropriated from the fund balance for building repairs at the fair training grounds. Insurance proceeds in this amount were received and recorded as revenue back in two thousand and nineteen for damage shifting to the training grounds during Hurricane Florence. Um, lastly, the employees' benefit insurance fund will be amended to appropriate one hundred and twenty thousand from fund balance for additional med cost administration fees of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and workers' compensation insurance of thirty-five thousand.
What happened on that hundred and twenty thousand, what's going on there?
So, um, we had additional, um, closeout, I think, Sanya could probably explain this better, but closeout costs, closing out as we transition into the new year, and then we had a little bit more, um, as we started this, this calendar year as well, than what was anticipated. We had an estimate over a six-month period of time, and then we had just divided that out by six months, and then covered that within, um, this current fiscal year, and then it came back a little bit higher, as, that's where we're at right now.
What, what is the total per year on that item? Four million dollars, five million, a million?
For the administrative fees?
Five million.
Yeah. I had through June thirtieth, we had three hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred, um, in administrative fees, and we're actually, um, at sixty-four thousand instead of fifty-five thousand that we had planned on being.
So, Ms. Ostrom is, is correct, as far as the fees are concerned. One of the things that we also realized, we had to pay the previous third-party administrator to handle run-out claims as well, so that's to the tune of between ten thousand and eleven thousand dollars a month from January, I think, is through April. Uh, there is some added costs, uh, for the med cost admin fees as well. Um, that is on the admin side, but we're hoping that we're going to realize some savings on the claims side. So, we had to pay a little bit more on the admin side to experience savings over on the claims.
But, there's a negative one-twenty the way you look at it, is that right?
Negative one-twenty?
Well, I think that, I'm talking about a hundred and twenty thousand dollar figure.
Right. So, it, it, I guess it could be, you could look at it that way. But, one of the things, I guess, we, we had the PO out there to pay Maestro Health, the previous third-party administrator, but we're only ha, we're still having to pay them January through April, so that's an additional forty-five thousand dollars, forty-three, one forty-two. So, um, we're talking about, um, I'm not sure we're talking about one hundred and twenty thousand. One, uh, mm-hmm, okay.
Well, I, I guess for me, um, is that something for forecast purposes in the, in the ensuing budget that we need to anticipate further increases, or is it kind of stabilizes?
No, I think it'll stabilize as far as the fees are concerned. But, again, that whole forty-five thousand dollar piece to pay those run-out claims, that was, we just had to do that to transition, to get the savings over on the claims side.
I got you.
So, we don't anticipate any additional, um, exorbitant costs associated with admin fees.
Thank you for that information.
Make a motion that we consider adopting a budget amendment for FY twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second.
Motion and second, is that, is that enough of a definition of what that is, is a budget ordinance amendment? I, I assume you, you know what that's referring to, so, okay. Uh, do we have any discussion? I'll say a, a roll call, starting with Alderman Oden.
Alderman Oden?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Almond?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, most curious, four minutes, Alderman Oden?
None tonight, sir.
Uh, four minutes, Alderman Best?
None, sir.
Four minutes, Alderman?
None.
Kinsey got a four minutes, Alderman?
None tonight, sir.
Four minutes, Alderman, Alderwoman Harris?
None, ma'am.
Four minutes, Alderman?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Bingle? Okay, uh, attorney's report?
May I, members of the board, um, one item, and I, I'll, I'll be brief, I know it's been a long evening for everyone. Um, several of you have reached out to me over the last many weeks, um, to inquire about legal options the city may have to restrict the future use of Union Point Park. Okay? Um, to get us all on the same page, um, that park consists of two separate tracks. One, we call the restroom track, which lies next to the hotel. The gazebo track is the peninsula, um, on the Trent River side of the entrance road. The, the bathroom track has restrictions on that piece, as you may recall. Those were imposed as the result of a, uh, a grant that ultimately requires the National Park Service to allow any future changes, sale, uses of that property. That is a restriction that came as a condition to getting a grant. I've had a number of inquiries as to why the city can't restrict the gazebo track, just like Mayor Bingle did with the bathroom track, thinking that the mayor proclaimed that section forever reserved, or that the board authorized the mayor to restrict that forever. That is factually not what happened at all. The, the mayor simply did that as a requirement of a grant, just like this board has done with sections of the Martin Marita Park. We got grant funds, those grants come with restrictions, those restrictions apply to the land, they run with the land forever. So, what options do you have if you're so inclined to restrict the future use of the gazebo track? We start with the state statute, much like your duty-to-vote statute. We have a, a very clear and simple state statute that says that the governing body of the local government has the authority to sell any real or personal property at any time, for any purpose, for any reason. Okay? That's the starting point, and that makes a lot of sense, because facts change over the years, over the decades, over the centuries. We would hate to have a board in seventeen fifty declare a part of downtown the Forever Horse Corral, and now we're left with the Horse Corral forever, that doesn't meet the needs of the citizens in this day and time. So, as a matter of public policy, we can't restrict our own property. But, how do we get restrictions on property? We can't give them away. One idea is to give some rights, give a restriction to a trust, or some benevolent group who will forever protect the park. The statutes that allow you to sell property require that you follow the procedures that we talk about from time to time when we sell property. You have statutes that tell us how we go about the bidding process, the auction process. What we can't do is give something away for nothing. How then do we give away property or, um, allow conservation easements, which we have done over the decades? We do that because there's always a trade-off. We're getting something for that conservation easement. We may free up questionable property that we can now develop if we restrict other property that we have for wetlands mitigation or other uses. So, just because we have imposed restrictions in the past, doesn't mean we did that unilaterally. It means it was part of a bigger transaction, and we got something for what we lost. Two things I recommend, um, when this issue comes up, and I've been giving this advice for thirty years now, and this is the second time my advice has been tested. The best way to restrict the future use of real property is to dedicate it as a park and give it a name. When you do that, and the citizenry starts to use that property and create memories and experiences there, it is politically very difficult to sell that property, as you fully experienced several meetings back. Okay? Now, that doesn't mean that it's forever restricted as a park. Why? Because the facts may change in the future. If you somehow found a way to restrict that property, even with a grant, as we have on the bathroom piece, there may be an amazing future use to that property, that the board unanimously agrees with, that the citizenry unanimously agrees with. However, the law may preclude that use because it's restricted. Okay? Just like that piece is now. If everybody had an amazing idea for the bathroom track, and everybody agreed with it. If the National Park Service doesn't agree, it will not happen. So, those restrictions are significant, and they're serious, and the preclusion against them comes with a logical reason. So, step one, my advice, make it a park and give it a name, that's what's happened here already, and so far, that has worked. The second thing you could do is, if there were a significant grant, um, a seven-figure-type grant that would allow the city to improve the gazebo section in some way, that grant would likely come with the same restrictions. So, that would be a tool in the future, if there were such a grant and a need in a project, it would likely come with that same restriction, and you'd end up with the same restrictions as the, on, on the gazebo track that you have on the bathroom track. The third and more remote option for a board in another century or two would be to consider the designation of that park as an historic site. But, it would be as an historic park, right? The buildings that were there in the decades past are long gone, there's nothing there to preserve anymore. So, its current use is a park. Um, in my mind, it's not been a park long enough to create a cultural sense of identity for that place. For our generation, it certainly has, but not in the context of an historical site. But, that day will come, and if the board at that time wants to pursue that, that would be a statutory option that the board and the HPC and the state could consider to dedicate that park, much like Central Park in New York City, as a forever historical park. Your best bet is to make it a park as you've done, and consider grants if you want to in the future. Questions?
Straight to the point.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, this has been a very interesting time. Uh, we've had some interesting issues over my eight years tenure, um, but none quite like this, I would say. Had a lot of conversation with folks, um, there's been a lot of political commentary that's been made about this subject as well. I think what we saw was how important the park is to the community. And, to be quite honest with you, it, it's really about the location, it's not about the infrastructure that's there. I would like to see, through a grant opportunity or some sort of funding, I would like to see some sort of improvements made to the park. It's obviously used a lot, um, there's a couple swing sets there, there's some old bears that I climbed on when I was five years old. Not saying that we take those away, be clear. Kind of make sure everything's said with a caveat, but, um, just, you know, some, some, some walkways, some benches, just something to improve the park, because I think it is obviously special to a lot of people. Those that are in the city and those that are not in the city. Um, and I've had to remind some folks that while we appreciate them coming and using our park, they've asked for investments in the park, that they're not taxpayers. Um, but I have heard from enough taxpayers, I feel confident that they would, um, like to see some improvements there as well. So, I'm not saying how much, I'm not saying what, I'm just throwing it out there, and I think we should do some improvements to the park.
Well, in essence, we made an improvement when we took the old stage down, that was destroyed by the flood anyway, and have our mobile stage. That has been a great improvement, I think, to the park, because we can have concerts in different locations within the park and move it to somewhere else. So, that in itself has been an improvement that you can call, but I, I like the idea of a grant. I think that would be a good thing, because it never hurts to have better swing sets, safer playthings for the kids. There are so many children there, the nice kid, a slide, or some other, uh, you know, playthings for the kids. That would be good, and that would potentially come from a grant, part if or otherwise. But, I, I would agree with Alderman Oden on that.
Me too.
So, so I would like to say, we did have some, some upgrades planned for the park. Um, you know, there are two, two sides on each side of the gazebo that, that are sodded and irrigated. We are going to be extending that over to the, the restroom side where that, um, stage used to be. That's a, that's a rough piece of grass, so putting some nice sod in there is going to greatly help. Uh, some of you may know that, uh, maybe it was about a month ago, a car ran through our, our, our bushes right there at the flagpole, and so we're getting ready to pull all that and do some landscaping in that general area as well. We are going to extend some sidewalk walks there, uh, do some electrical infrastructure to where, uh, when we're having events and activities, instead of, um, food trucks having to plug in with generators, they'll just be able to plug into the power. Um, we are going to be adding concrete cornhole down there, and we are going to be upgrading some, some swings as well. So, some, some things are coming up with Union Point Park.
Thank you. It's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, city managers report.
Okay, I've got a few things to talk about. In, in, in front of you, I've got, um, some information on the Stanley White Recreation Center. Uh, our consultants, CPL Architects, they have given us some prices. Uh, if you look at option one, um, this was, uh, the recreation center that was, uh, that you all looked at in the concept plan while we were going through the planning part of it, and they did put a price tag of eleven mil, eleven million nine hundred thousand dollars on that. Um, the, the group heard you loud and clear, talking about the budget of approximately eight million dollars for fee and funds. And so, on the backside of that is option two, um, which is about twenty thousand eight hundred square feet, includes one gym, still includes meeting space, as well as cardio and, and weight room. It does leave out a gym, but as you will see on, on the, uh, on the rendering, it does have a future space to add another recreation center. And it is just one level. So, what, what I'm looking for is, I'm giving you this information, uh, I'm asking for direction on which way this board would like to go, and then we can keep on rolling with this project.
Well, I'm gonna just jump right in there. I think because the board accepted the, the concept of option one and everything that the community was asking for, and the Red Cross, um, I don't see why we can't go ahead and try and get some funding in regards to financing for the remainder, so that we're not skimping the community for the twenty thousand square feet and just do it all at once, instead of the thought process of, in the future, we're at, if we're gonna do it, let's just go ahead and do it and get it done with. And if that price tag is eleven point nine, I think that we can figure out funding for the rest.
I agree with, um, Alderman Harris. Um, you know, we've got a, a, a good, a substantial chunk of it at the eight point three. You know, I, I, I believe that we've put it out there, I want to see a two-story building. I think that would be the most attractive building there at the corner. You know, I want to see people working out through the glass, I just, I think it would be great, the whole Red Cross thing. And I believe, you know, we could apply for part if on this. Um, I, I believe there's some other grant options, I don't know, we could talk to Margaret Bate. I don't know if they would be, be willing to do any of that, but, you know, if we can get the financing, if we got the bulk of it, and we can get the financing down to even a two million or a million-dollar financing, um, we will definitely see the results. This is going to be the best recreation center that's appropriate for the needs of our, our citizens, and I would be, um, supporting, going with it, you know, the option one.
Where, where are y'all seeing eight million? Because on my sheet, option one says eleven point nine.
Well, eight, eight point three is the money that we received.
Okay, I know that, but this is saying eleven point nine.
Right, but I'm saying, we would have a big chunk, we would already have eight point three, it'd be eleven point nine.
If you look at, on the backside of that, you'll see the other option, that seven point eight eight, which, which was intended in the, in the, in the, in the mouth.
We didn't have to question that.
Can I, can I ask a, a question, Alderman Harris? I know you served on that board, uh, on the advisory board. Why did y'all select two gyms?
This, this is something that the board voted on, it was a six to one vote to accept that concept when they brought it to the...
I know, when it came, but I'm just, you know, because I've had, and I've had a lot of citizens reach out to me now, and they're saying, instead of two gyms, why didn't that team, the advisory board and everything, uh, opt in to have a swimming pool put in?
Well, and the main, the main part of that was public input that, that was received. And we did a considerable amount of public input, and, and the gym space, the thing about a double gym, that only, not only was it for, you know, youth sports and things like that, but it also would, would double as an assembly room, a larger space, as well as if a disaster occurred and you had a Red Cross, activate that, shelter would be a larger space for that as well. So, it was just a multipurpose room.
Yeah, it was just brought up to me by several citizens, and I was just wondering, was that brought up in your meetings? Um, when they did the public input, absolutely, but I think the caveat to that is the fact that they have the aquatic center, so, I don't know how, it obviously didn't get pushed to the forefront, but, um, the majority of the community that did come out and speak, they are, they're the, you know, that's the, the plan. I mean, I, I ultimately have voted against it, but it was a six to one, and everybody on the board agreed to this plan. So, we need about three point six million. I think, you know, like Alderman Bingle said, I mean, the double gym is a benefit to the community. Um, you can have tournaments come out here, um, all the states.
I'm not saying that it's not a benefit, I'm just, I just asked a question, was it brought up in meetings? About a pool, a swimming pool?
I believe it was brought up, I think, definitely, probably by, um, former Alderman, uh, Bernard White.
Okay. Also, another question that I have was that, um, if, you know, you have two gyms here, so, and then we were talking about at our last meeting about putting five hundred thousand dollars in a cupboard outside basketball court. So, I, I think that's, I'm looking at that from a perspective of, you've got three courts here now, you've got three basketball.
I mean, they stepped, we stepped back from it. That was suggested for the fact of, like, we don't, obviously, we don't even know when this is going to be built, two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six?
We anticipate approximately eighteen months from now.
Okay, eighteen months? There is no option right now, but the gym is not open twenty-four hours, so that, having a, some sort of shelter over the basketball court that's there, they... So that having a, some sort of shelter over the basketball court that's there, they can go whenever.
I just, I just don't see putting five hundred thousand dollars in an outdoor covered basketball court.
Right, well, the board decided not to go with that.
I know, we didn't vote on anything about it. We talked about it, so I didn't know what was the final decision on that. We still haven't made a final decision on that art money, only about certain things that we approved. So that's why I was asking about the five hundred thousand covered court.
Alderman Odom.
Foster, what's the size of the former Stanley White Rec Center?
No, it was approximately eighteen thousand square feet.
So... So the plan, the thirty-five thousand, option one, is what the designers came up with based off of the eight million dollar budget that we had three years ago?
At that time, that's correct.
So because of delays, we're now facing this almost four million dollar increase?
That's correct.
We experienced it with the elevator, same difference, that's the problem and the wrong move delay. But again, I think we have good options. One of the things I, you know, on the double gym with tourism, and Jeff, you're on that board, but TDA is looking for more assets so that we hold tournaments because tournaments bring people in, they spend the night. So potentially we could ask for a grant from them. You know, they've granted brick and mortar money for Triumph House and Fireman's Museum, but I certainly...
They gonna give us four million dollars?
No, but they might give you fifty thousand. So, I mean, every, every little bit defrays, you know.
Kim, what's the debt service going to be for the elevator? If we stretch it out to twenty years, which I think was the longest term?
We, we, I recommended the fifteen years. It could go up to twenty years. And so we were looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars annually over the fifteen years. We have about just over two million dollars coming off in the next four years.
And so for twenty year, what, do you know what that would be?
If we did twenty years at four million, so we were asking, that's an additional one hundred ninety-five thousand annually, we're just over five point one eight.
So we're basically saying six hundred thousand dollars in debt service to pay for the elevator and the addition to the cost of Stanley White, roughly?
Yeah, and we've got, we have two million coming off in debt service in the next four years.
But we've got, I mean, this coming budget here, you need to, you need to kind of hear some of the things that's coming down the pipe that, you know, I mean, we all know that we're going to be requesting fire stations to be built. There's some conversations about other public safety issues. I mean, fire trucks, fire stations, you know, police department's going to have these. I mean, we're, we're spending a lot of money.
I definitely agree with you on the needs of the budget, but I also know that over twelve years, we've done a lot of debt services for different things, fire trucks and things of that nature. And I think we do have a pretty good fund balance or, you know, budget amount to be able to cover this elevator and the added effect of the increase to Stanley White. I mean, it makes no sense to do option two, but like, like Alderman Bengal said, we have the bulk of it. I mean, partnerships, if we was going to allocate five hundred thousand dollars or a million from these ARP funds, I mean, we can bring that number down. We're only, we're only out three point six million. So I, I think we have the ability to finance it and cover it.
Foster, you're a recreational professional. I mean, do you see the need of a two-gym Stanley White Center?
Well, what I can tell you is that that facility was designed for the future. And the whole goal is to build a recreation center that would get us in the next sixty to seventy years. The, the old Stanley White Recreation Center lasted about forty-five years. And so that, that's what we're looking at. We're looking at the next generation to play there. So it really depends on the direction you want to give us, but if you want to go with a single gym, you don't see a lot of those anymore in communities this size.
So, so what, what is all of the other stuff? Those this big to the left, top left on option two, it's like some flex space?
So what you'll see on the top left, that is basically the same thing as what was on the other, other page on the second floor. That is weight room, cardio room, and additional restrooms.
I wish Tripp was still here, but I don't, I don't know why there's such a significant cost in a second gymnasium floor. Is it the...
Well, it's the second floor too.
Is that what it is in the second floor?
Yes, yes.
So, so then why don't we tell them that we would like to have two courts and not a second floor and see what that number is?
We could do that, but then we'll run into issues with space on that side.
Well, the footprint's the same, isn't it? Whether you put some on top or not, I mean, we're talking about just doing something away from it.
No, you, you would increase the footprint if you took the, the second floor items and, and put those on the first floor. That would increase the footprint.
Maybe we should do away with the second room, second floor item.
So, so tell them that this optional second gym that's outlined here for future growth, what the price would be to have that now? That's going to change the footprint too, right?
It will.
Well, just to say that you guys six to one voted on this plan.
Well, that plan, it would include everything. He's just saying, make it one floor instead of two floors.
That's, that's when we thought that we would be able to deal with it for eight million dollars. And times have changed since we voted on that plan, what, two years ago?
I don't mind going back to them and seeing if you could incorporate, because it's the weight room and the bathrooms that you're incorporating into the first floor. Believe the two gyms, just incorporate. I mean, I would love to see the second floor, but I get it with the money because the second floor, that should cost...
Is that a walking track up there?
Is that a walking track?
It is a walking track.
Elderly community would absolutely love that. Again, I don't understand why we can't find financing. We were able to do it with the elevator. Why can't we do it to just complete the gym? And when you think about the double gym, think about the space for the Red Cross shelter that was argued about, that's more space for people to get in there if we ever are hit with a severe situation or hurricane. And then you have all of these other things that were inputted by the community that are a benefit to them. I don't know why we just don't, we have art funds and we can go get financing. We asked for a million last meeting and we were talking about five hundred thousand dollars for a shelter. That's one point five there. So then now we're at two four?
I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, we didn't, the shelter over top of the max.
Right, it was discussed in, with the art one. So in it being discussed, instead of it not going there, you have one point five to play with.
Two point five because of the one million for the elevator. We're financing the whole elevator, correct?
We're financing the whole thing.
Okay, there you go, two point five. So, I mean, there's money, I feel like we can find the money to make sure that we do option one. I mean, do it right the first time.
So you just need to show a hands for direction?
I, I just need direction on how you'd like us to proceed.
I'm good with what you showed me. I mean, that's...
Which option?
Is option one.
I agree with option one.
And, and we can look at the other options for financing or other funds available.
I agree. So we, y'all agreeing on option one?
Option one?
Yeah.
I'm on option one.
Since that, since that's what the consensus of the, the plant advisory board wanted and the citizens wanted, so...
Well, let's make a motion, we voted on it, so...
Well, you can make a motion if you want to.
Do you want to make a motion?
All right, well, since this is what was voted on six to one, I make a motion that we move forward with option one and find, and allow staff to find financing and partnership, like Sabrina said, to cover the rest of the funding.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion.
Yeah, on, on the comment about the vote of six to one, I think if you go back and look at the record, it was very clear that the budget for this was going to be eight million dollars.
And I agree. I, I, I understand that, Alderman Odom. I agree with you, but I also understood that the budget for the elevator was going to be one, one point five to two million dollars. And look what, I mean, we are in extraordinary times right now and the more we delay and the more we kick the can down the road, it's not going to get any cheaper. I can't believe what little we were going to get now for seven point eight million. So that, that does bother me because we extensively, all, you know, I put my net out on the line there with walking tracks and healthy options for all citizens to, to take part in. So I think we should build a facility that's, that's right for our city. And I, I hate that prices are the way they are. Maybe as we get down the line, again, I keep praying that things are going to correct themselves because it'll help everybody in our community if they do. But I think it's important that we move this project. We've been kicking the can down the road way too long. And, you know, we've got Margaret, she needs to get on stick. Let's try the part of it and everything else and see what other funds we can bring in here to defray the cost. Maybe we can get close.
So, so with your calculations, that eleven point nine million, we, we have eight million, as Alderman Odom said, and that was correct. And then, so that leaves three point nine. And then if this board chooses to do so, we got two point five from the art money, which that leaves us at with one point four million that we got to try to find. So we can find one point four million.
Yeah, but I mean, really, yeah, so...
So I would support this.
So we have a second, I'd like to call...
We, we do have questions.
Yeah.
And you've called questions. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bengal.
Alderman Bengal?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
I'm going to vote yes only because Foster says that it's the center of the future.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
No.
What else do you have, Mr. Hughes?
I want to remind everyone that this Friday, we have the grand opening of Mark Marietta Park at eleven AM, so I hope everyone can attend that. We're, we're also have a hot dog lunch out there. Should have a lot of fun, have some canoes and kayaks. So if you'd like to go out in the water, we'd love to accommodate you on that. Also want to let you know that we have a few street closures. The South Lynn Burney Road, railroad crossing will be closed again tomorrow, March twenty-third from seven AM to twelve noon so that you can finish milling, replacing ties and repaving. And also on Wednesday, March twenty-third from six AM to four PM, Simmons Street will be down to one lane in each direction between Newton Drive and News Boulevard while the resources is going to be repairing an underground leak at a local business. And that's all I have.
I'll say maybe a future meeting we'll do a budget limit change on the original, you know, we approved what, eight million?
Yeah, I don't know we're at that point yet.
Yeah, yeah. When, when the architect gets a little bit farther down the road, we'll come back with that.
Well, we can rescind a prior one and, and approve a new one or how do we do that?
Yeah, I think once, once we get the actual amount, we'll do that.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
It's good to do business, starting with Alderman Odom?
Nothing, Mr.
Alderman Best? Alderman Kinsey?
It's time for the city manager's review.
Okay.
Yes, I just would like to...
No, no, we're still with Alderman Kinsey. Did you have a date in mind or anything?
Maybe the next meeting.
Okay, is that agreeable to the board?
In closed session, is that right? Yes.
Okay. We'll do that next meeting. Okay?
Yep.
Did you have anything else, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just remind everyone that the New Bern Fireman's Museum would like to invite the public to attend the dedication of the new nine eleven memorial, which is located in the memorial park adjacent to the museum. The ceremony will be at three PM Sunday, April the third, and everyone is surely invited. I hope everyone's had opportunity to run by and take a look at the monument. It's a very beautiful piece of artwork and I'm proud to be a part of it.
Bobby, you want to come up and kind of say anything about that? I noticed you had about ten, ten or twelve firemen out there today working. You want to, of course, I saw you on a piece of machinery the other day, so we thank you for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
And any bricks to be balled or whatever and update us?
Yeah, we had, we had a vision for that park probably like five, six years ago and it really has turned out to be a set for the community. And it's a great opportunity. In last September eleventh get together, we had a meeting we had, but there was so many people that actually live here that were affected by either have family members or, so it's going to be a great part that they have an asset. So I'm proud to be a part of it, so.
That's great. I mean, this...
Twenty years ago, the mayor and I had a vision for that lot, but it didn't happen. So you got your park and I'm glad you did because that was the better vision and it's worked out beautiful.
One of the, one of the things that we're looking at doing in the future is we still have one of the, the bell. The bell that we have on display down there now is the bell that was located in, the fire bell that was located in the Five Points Community. We had the bell, was it here? The bell that we come and have?
The bell that was here, isn't that at the, is that Triumph House?
George, is it still, no, that was the clock. George, is it still upstairs? The bell?
I'll, I'll check.
Well, there's, no. We have another bell that was a fire bell that we think was the fire bell that was here at City Hall that we would like to eventually, you know, raise funds and put on display as well. It's not going to be anything like what the one that we have down there now. We're just talking about pedestal mounting, but it's going to, you know, you'll hopefully be, if someone out there wants to help restore one of our fire bells and put it on display, we would certainly welcome your funds.
And, and is it true, Fred, if you run the bell, the pin or which bell he knew, he would want our town to go to without?
Yeah, they would drop the reins and he would, he would run back to the fire station and back in, get ready to go, and he knew, knew right where to go.
What else you got?
Yeah, old Fred, no, I don't think, sir.
Alderman Harris?
Well, add on to all the fire talk, I think we all know that this is one hundred years of the great fire. So hopefully we're, we have months to plan and make sure we do something to recognize that. But also if you come back up, isn't this weekend where you guys are going to be pulling the truck? This, aren't you pulling the truck this weekend?
Yes, Saturday.
Okay, so will you come up here and just tell them what it's, what it's about? Because me and Olivia have a date at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, eight, eight o'clock Saturday morning, we will be doing the NDA fundraiser, Hope for Harrison. And we have, I think, right now, we have about thirteen, twelve team or so. And we've got a bunch of sponsors, so we've raised a lot of money for that. That's from eight o'clock to eight o'clock, and I will be pulling the fire. So I will be, I've, I've got a team myself, so that goes from eight to ten. Then from ten to two, we have, have an open house and we have a lot of activities for the kids and stuff and we can do, so we're looking forward to it.
Awesome. Well, thank you for all your hard work. And again, I always just like to thank the staff for all the hard work that you do to make us look good, answering all the questions when I'm not an expert. So thank you for your hard work.
Okay, Alderman Bengal?
I've got two pieces of business this evening. So the first is we, as a board, need to address the seating of the new board now that the election dates are in place. So what I'd like to recommend is that if there is no, if there is no runoff, that the new board be seated after that election is certified, which will be in June. If there is a runoff, that the new board would be seated after certification of that election, which would be in August.
Second.
So I, I'd be second, but in June. So I know before you were shooting July first?
No, it's because, because May seventeenth is now the, the election. If there's no runoffs, they usually take, I don't know if it's ten days, two weeks to certify. So it'll either be the first or second meeting in June, depending on when they, they have to certify the election. And then if there is a runoff, then the new board, yeah, the new board can't be seated until August. And again, that's after certification. Anything else I need to add to that motion, Scott?
No, ma'am.
Jeff, second.
Motion second, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same motion, cheers.
Okay, and then the second piece of business is regarding the Tisdale House. That is the house that currently sits on the property where Stanley White is going to be. And, you know, we have been in the process of trying to get somebody to move it. And Preservation Foundation had contacted us and I've been talking to them. And it is a very, very historic house and they would like, you know, to save it.
And it is a very, very historic house, and they would like, um, you know, to save it. So we inquired about them moving it. They looked all around for land. The only piece of land we could come up with was the lot that sits, um, behind Development Services. So if you're on the REM, is that it, REM Avenue side of the property? So it's that big green space that's there. That's actually two lots. The house will fit on the lots there. So in speaking to our city attorney, um, it, it's not something that we could probably give to an organization. It's just not, I don't think it's kosher. I, I don't think it would be the right.
Only if we restrict it to low to moderate income families.
Yeah, and, and so this is a house that basically we'd like to move, and they would advertise it, put it on the lot, and then resell it as is, for somebody to buy it and restore it and make it be part of that beautiful neighborhood.
So they would be buying it from the city?
No, what, what we would do is basically we would have to pay to move it, put it on the lot that we own, and then sell it.
We'd have to pay to move it?
Yeah, and then we would retain, we would retain the proceeds.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it's sold, okay.
But if, if they do it, there's no way for us other than to go through an upset bid process. We could sell a upset bid process for the lot. They may or may not get it.
Okay.
Do we know how much it is gonna cost to move it? Do we have a rough estimate?
Rough estimate, rough estimate to move it, put it back in the foundation and work on the, uh, on the force. It's gonna be over a hundred thousand dollars.
Woo!
How many?
A hundred.
Hundred.
So, um.
Well, you gotta move it to get the Stanley White built, so, I mean, I was thinking in the, in the thought process of the redevelopment, but I mean, they barely have a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, I don't know that they would want to take on a, a project like that. So I'm, I'm just putting this before the board so that you all know what's going on. This is, I've been talking to the city attorney. This is the recommendation. Um, we could really do whatever, but I will tell you that the house is worth saving. You know, I'm, I'm sure Matt Shelley would agree with me. We're both preservationists and we believe that house should be saved. It has a beautiful history to it. You know, it was part of a big farm area back in the day, and I would just really hate, hate to see that house.
Is there any estimated cost for repairing that house?
No, but we wouldn't repair it. We would just sell it.
I know the city wouldn't. You, you sell it and then suppose it sits there and nobody buys it, and then what's gonna happen with it?
Do, right, do we have any type of, of estimate on appraisal of what it would be worth to, if we did expense a hundred thousand dollars to, well, just to move it? Would we be able to gain that back in the sale of the house? That's what I would be concerned about.
It's a gamble. I mean, what happens if it falls apart in the middle of First Street, you know? It's a gamble.
I can't remember the last time I saw a house moved in Newburgh. We've moved a lot of houses in Newburgh. So, I'm just not sure. Putting it out there.
So we would have to pay a hundred percent of the cost of moving it, putting it on our lot, sell it, and then we get our money back. Try to get our money back.
We'd be selling, well, something.
Or, I mean, you have any other suggestion? I mean, Preservation was willing to pay to move it. And then, you know, we wanted to partner, give them the lot, let them put it there, then they would pay all those fees. But after talking to the city attorney, that is not something that we can do.
Can we not, can we not let them have the lot until they, and pay us when they sell the place?
No, we've got, we've gotta follow those, remember the, the, the real estate sale procedures? So we can either give it away, if it's like Habitat, we give it away with restrictions, low income families, or we go through the bid process.
Well, I mean, give it away for low income fam- low income families?
Well, someone, but someone's gotta pay a hundred thousand dollars for the house and then fix it up.
That's, that's.
Right. And of course, you know, the, the, there's a standing offer to take the house to anyone for a dollar, so.
Take the house for a dollar?
Yeah, and we haven't had any takers.
Been no takers.
We have no takers.
Has, has anyone wanna take it for a dollar and move it?
No, no. We had nobody who would take the house for a dollar and move it. So Preservation stepped in and said, we'll take the house and we'll pay to move it, but we have no place to move it to.
So why can't they, so we can't sell them the land?
We can't, we have to go through an upset bid process.
We can't control who the buyer is. The highest bidder always wins.
So, um, Scott or Foster, has anybody, um, gotten an estimate of what it would cost to demolish the whole house? Question?
Well, no, we, we could demolish it in-house. It, it would just be the tipping fees to the landfill. And if there's any, um, asbestos maintenance, I'm not sure we checked that out.
You gotta worry about five or six thousand dollars for asbestos.
So if you wanna digest it and kick it down the road to the next meeting, um, Mr. Attorney?
What's your turnaround time on that home being moved?
We would like to have the, the house moved by the end of June.
So, again, um, time is of the essence if you want the Stanley White built.
I guess now if we move the house, put it there, could we, can we sell them the house then for a hundred thousand dollars at that point?
A hundred?
For a hundred, whatever it costs us to move it with our place? Well, no, I'm saying can we put the house on the lot, do that and sell them that, so at least get our money back?
Yeah, we can't control, we can't control the high bidder. It'll go through the auction process.
It still would have to go through the auction process. At least we get our money back.
Can, can we do that and set the minimum bid for whatever we want it to be?
Yes, sir.
And you said we can't give, give, give the house, give the land?
Can't give that. If we do, we can if we restrict it to low income families.
And they are.
But keep, keep, keep in mind.
They decided that if we give it to them, it's still restricted.
Yeah, because they wanna get their money out of it.
And, and of course, this is not, you know, the, the, the money that's spent to set it up is, is not move-in condition. It's a house that now is gonna need another six-figure investment.
Right, wow. At least a couple of hundred thousand.
Yes, yes.
So at the end of the, but it will be a beautiful home in that neighborhood, right? It will be a beautiful.
So ultimately, if by June we don't have any resolution, it's gotta come down?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, can, can there be a estimated appraised value for the house sitting on the new lot?
There can, but it's just like Elspeth, and all them figures were nine, 10 million dollars from some of them other investors. This one's 27 million, so, uh, depend on the quality of restoration, the, the, um, the technical exhaustion of, uh, totally ABA, uh, or whatever compliance you level you wanna go to, uh, from, I mean, it's total, I mean, ripping walls out and changing walls, um, totally energy efficient, insulating, et cetera. It, it would be, you know, to me, uh, it's, when we get it back, we don't want somebody to take 10 years to, to retrofit this home. So when you get it over there, I assume we're gonna replicate a porch similar to what is there, because that porch is toast once we start the moving process. So you're gonna basically move that home and, and we have spent countless hours and days trying to figure this thing out. Uh, everything from reclamation of, of hardwoods, et cetera, in there from the recycling standpoint. But there's a lot of concern about the historical significance of the home, so we're, as far as movability, practicality of where to, that's the most optimal location. From there, uh, somebody that's gonna restore that home is gonna spend a minimum of 150, and it's just round them up to 250, 300, depending on.
Matt, um, that house would qualify for tax credits because it's in an overlay district. Gents is in the overlay district. Wouldn't they qualify for tax credits?
An opportunity zone.
Uh, you mean the National Register?
Yes, yes.
Well, um, because you move it, probably not.
Oh, because it's moved from the original spot? You can't, even though it's located in a district? Interesting.
Well, that's the opportunity zone.
Not a guarantee?
Yes, it's for commercial.
Not in the line hall?
Okay.
It's the state and the feds, it's not, uh, the state.
Just curious, because that would be a, an attraction for somebody to buy it potentially.
Right, so it's, uh, just the state if it's owner occupied, but if it becomes a, an, an income-producing property, then the feds also.
Understood, but no, I'm saying that as a personal residence, that might be an attraction for the, the tax credit.
Yeah, if that's available, yeah, that's 15%.
15 with the state?
Yep. And then if it's, um, uh, income-producing, say, someone decides to rent it out to, uh, so, you know, someone, uh, a family, then it can be up to 40% total. 20% state and 20% federal.
Right, okay.
Uh, I think, I think we've, we have failed. We haven't done a good job at marketing it. I think if you put a sign out front, spend a couple hundred dollars, put a sign, free house, dollar house, whatever, see if you get any takers, it would be well worth a couple hundred dollars to do that. But Scott, my last question on this is, is there a way to package a potential sale to say, this house on our lot, what, you know, if, if somebody would be willing to do that? Hey, we'll, can, can, can you do that? Can you say, we're gonna move this if we get an offer like in advance of us actually moving it? Can we get a contract?
I, I'd wanna think about that. May, maybe.
Because if somebody were to come up and say, I'll give you a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, then it's worth us to move it because we know we're getting our money back out of it.
Correct.
Versus taking the risk of moving it and not getting our money back.
If we knew we had a starting bid at that, and that's, that's the problem. We've gotta go through the auction process.
I mean, you, can you go through the process of the auction and then decide to not accept the bid because it's not conducive? So then why don't we just start the bid process? And if it's not conducive to what we wanna do, we don't do it. I mean, we won't know until we know.
So right now, if you proceed with the 11.9 million, 35,000 square feet, and you, you in any way retard the start of that Stanley White Center, they're not gonna hold those prices for so long. So here you are worried about 140,000 dollar recovery, and you wait six months building that to see what that 11.9 is?
In, in the past, the historical preservation of society has gone into some of our older homes and removed things that they could say salvage for if you're restoring another home. Like moldings, um, mantel pieces or, you know, hearths and stuff like that, and, uh, some columns and decorative trims and all that kind of stuff. I, I mean, if we can't do anything else, we need to do, we need to make a decision on this thing, because this is gonna be holding up a, now a 11 million dollar project, you know? Maybe we should offer that to them to see if, how much of that stuff they would like to have.
No, I just think it's, it's the house itself they wanna save. And I, I understand it. I, I get it. I think the mayor gets it. Scott, what I really would like to do at this point is see, I like the suggestion of Alderman, can we package it and put it out there, you know, even for 10 days? And just say, you know, um, this house to be moved here on this lot, uh, you know, unfinished, 120 or whatever we think it's gonna cost us, and see if we can, you know, start the bidding war, whatever, if we can get any takers.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll, let me reflect on that.
Okay.
It's, it's gonna require performance bonds. We've, we've gotta know that we're secure and we have it. So it's, it's, it's far from a garden variety transaction.
Yeah, and I'm sure Preservation would help at least advertise it or put it out there. They have a statewide magazine and a regional magazine that they could advertise it in, which potentially could get somebody.
And Tron Palace, nothing?
No, they don't. That's not.
Mr. Hughes, if, uh, you called the mover tomorrow morning, is it six weeks out? Three months to get that thing moved?
I would have to find out. We haven't.
You have a ballpark idea?
Call Preservation, because they did the workup and they know, they've got all the facts.
We'll reach out to them.
Yeah.
You gotta be good enough.
Yeah.
So. Before we hang it up, with the 11, with the project, it's in the way, right? Once you get your direction, so what's the next step?
They, they, they will start working on the actual construction drawings for that.
There's considerable concern in the Newburgh community about the demolition of that home.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. You waited, you get the phone calls, Bobby?
I don't want any phone calls, right?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm been getting them in there. Oh, yeah, well, I'm all favorite saving that bad boy.
Wait, Tisdale House at newbernnc.gov and we all get a copy of all these?
Mary Carter floors. You haven't ever bought flowers from Mary Carter?
The colonial floors.
You really, well, it's Mary Carter. She's one of them Tisdale girls, man. If you missed buying flowers from her, you really missed out on it.
I forgot to mention, um, the Martin Luther King Outreach Ministry, we're having our annual candlelight, candlelight service, um, April 3rd at 5:00 PM at St. Paul Catholic Church. It's free to the public. Please come out and help to celebrate. Um, that's April 3rd at 5:00 PM at St. Paul Catholic Church.
Okay, so, um, are we gonna like immediately get a, like a 10-day? What, what are we doing on Tisdale House?
Well, they're gonna get some more information. He's gonna try to find a package, and I, we will be in touch.
Emotional war.
Well, if we can package it, if we can put the lot and the house together and try to put it out there before we move the house to see if we've got any takers.
And you will present it on the next four weeks?
Next, next agenda.
Next agenda.
Well, that's two weeks. I thought I said 10 days.
Okay.
All right.
Maggie, Mike, and Dennis.
I, I, I need you all. I, I apologize. I need you in a closed session. Um, if, if you'll keep your seats, I can do it in two minutes or less while the audience leaves. But, um, we need to talk about, um, City of Newburgh versus Gazine Inc., um, to maintain our 25th coverage, pursuant to 143, 1311, 83.
So moved, you're up.
Second. Motion and second, we're going to close session. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same motion carries. We're going to close session.